Six thirty P M. Tell me when you're ready. Okay, it's six thirty P M and it's uh it's Monday, April the twelfth, and this is the April meeting of the Township of Edwardsburg Cardinal Administration Finance Committee of the Whole. And with me in the council chambers are all members of council plus uh Mister Bradley, our volunteer member, and C A O Dave Grant. And joining us by Zoom tonight is Mister Dave Robertson, another volunteer member of the committee, and Clerk Rebecca Williams joining us by Zoom, as well as the Treasurer Melanie Stubbs, and Director of Operations Board Shaw. And also joining us by Zoom tonight, Dwayne Crawford, the building official, and Wendy Van Kylen, the Community Development Coordinator, who will be making a presentation later in the agenda. So with those few opening remarks, I'm going to call for approval of the agenda. Do one of the members have approval of the motion to approve the agenda as presented? Take Counselor Hunter, is there a seconder?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron about to call the question, those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried, so we'll use the agenda that we have in front of us. Next item on the agenda is disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Are there any disclosures here this evening?
None, Larry.
Okay. Moving now then to item number four, which business which is business arising from previous committee of the whole meeting, which was held on March the eighth. Are there any questions or any business arising from the meeting of March the eighth? See, no one has questions. So in the absence of any business arising, I'm going to move on from there. And the next item up is item number five, which is delegations and presentations. Now, we have three delegations and presentations here this evening and a long agenda in front of us. So I'd like to remind the presenters, I think it's a ten minute presentation, and then we'll provide some time for some questions if members of the committee have questions. And so I'd ask you to keep your presentations to the ten minute mark, and I'd ask the clerk if she's present, if she would remind me when the ten minutes is up. Sometimes they get, watching a presentation, forget to watch the clock. So the first presentation is a twenty twenty one grant request, and Mister George Tierney is going to make the presentation. Mister Tierney, you have the you have the floor for ten minutes.
Great, thank you very much, thank you, thank you for having me. What I thought I would do is a quick recap by by way of doing that introduce those who may not be sure what the Upper Canada Folk Fest is, who we are, what we accomplished last year. Then I'll tell you our plans, hopes and dreams for twenty twenty one, and how we hope to involve Edwardsburg Cardinal to the benefit of local businesses and organizations. So for those aren't familiar, last year, we a group of us launched a folk music festival that we held at the Kingsman Amphitheatre in Prescott. Pretty much the only music festival that took place in Canada, let alone the let alone launching a brand new live festival. So we're pretty proud of what we did, who we are. My name is George Tierney, I'm the President of Upper Canada Folk Fest, founder. I'm a member of the National Board Directors of the Canadian Folk Music Association. I live just north of Spencerville, up near Donville, and I've been a scout leader in Edwardsburg Cardinal for many, many years, stopped that a few years ago, but and local musician. Also on our board, just really quickly, which just by way of introducing them to you, want to add sort of credibility and background to who and what we are. Arthur McGregor from Kentville, a longtime organizer of folk music throughout Canada, really. Herb Cluchay from Kentville, Jammin Around Man Productions, brings the technical side of the organization to us and music production. Graham Lindsay, fellow board member of the Canadian Folk Music Association, comes out of Ottawa with huge background and skills in the music industry and in online broadcast capabilities and web capabilities. And most locally to Edwardsburg Cardinal is, you'll know, Mary Moore is on our board as well, local musician organizer, and she looks after the marketing and website of our organization. What we accomplished last year was a live music festival, as I say, at the amphitheatre. We had five musicians of, let's call it relative prominence in the folk music industry, including Juno Award winners, the whole nine yards. So we do, I organize lots of music and events for local musicians. And for this one, for the Folk Fest, the the intent is to bring touring musicians who are from or around Eastern Ontario to to the area to promote that way. Just checking my time here. What we did was a half day festival with these five performers. We, with the local health unit, organized it that we were allowed one hundred attendees, paid attendees, to join us. We had tremendous financial support from local businesses, so we were able to cut it off for safety purposes. We met our financial goals, and we cut it off at eighty people attending, plus about twenty volunteers, fifteen or so twenty volunteers onsite during the day. Basically, it was considered by all an unqualified success and was really great to put it on. So we're we're just thrilled that we were able to pull it off in the year of of a pandemic. We are going forward for twenty twenty one, remaining hopeful that we're going to be able to do it again by September of of this year. And all indications are, like I say, we'll cross our fingers and and get going with it. We have secured funding from the town of Prescott, so we are returning to the amphitheatre. And our goal for Upper Canada Folk Fest was always to see how we could grow the event into the surrounding communities with satellite events, and that's where my request to you today and where Edwardsburg Cardinal comes into play. The the goal here is to, if we can secure the funding, to bring early satellite events, so in the weeks leading up to September twenty fifth, which is when it is this year, to local businesses. At the outset, the the obvious ones would be to Joe's, to the Mill. We'd like to run something at Johnstown Community Centre, at the Bridgeview Restaurant, and at Windmill Brewery, both of which I'm directly involved with with those two businesses. The goal would be to to sort of put together a program that the Upper Canada Folk Fest through the Secure would be able to provide the musicians to these organizations and businesses, really, so so that we can help them build traffic to their businesses, build traffic to the community at little or no cost to them. So the funding, any funding we receive, the vast majority, do I have a number? No. Over ninety percent is going to go to the musicians and to promotional activities. With the satellite events, we would be looking for local musicians, and I'm friends and with and know them all. The type of musician that comes with their own gear to play a gig when they're paid paid appropriately. So we're, we wouldn't need additional funding for for sound and setup for that type of thing. So that's our goal. The, we would then hopefully be able to bring an event back to these businesses. The event is going to run, the main event, the Saturday night, September twenty fifth in Prescott. We hope to continue it that evening by way of also providing funding to bring musicians back to these venues that night as well. We would obviously ask those venues not to have live music during the day that would be in direct competition with the main event. But then for the attendees, for, you know, hopefully, again, the hundred people that come out and others in the community could then go out to events that evening. In the event that this entire thing is held back by the the pandemic, we fully intend to go ahead with online events. Within our group, we have very, very deep skill sets to take events online. Myself, there's a event that I've been helping host for the last fifty four weeks. We did our fiftieth show on April second, it's called Braystonville Schoolhouse Revisited. It's it's based out of Quebec, I've got family back there. And on April second, we actually successfully, one after the next, put thirty seven musicians live on Facebook via a rolling Zoom presentation. Also with the Canadian Folk Music Awards, we just finished a huge week long event of lot of recorded performances combined with live cut ins for our annual show. So we have very deep skill sets within the group to be able to take the the whole thing live live or recorded online if we're forced to go that way, so it's going either way. So that's who I am, who we are, what we did, and what we want to accomplish going forward. And the reason I specifically asked for for three thousand dollars of support is that I've got mixed messages from friends in the community in terms of the type of funding that might be available from Edwardsburg Cardinal. Some saying, oh, they might give you fifty bucks, some saying they have lots of money, we can get thousands. So really, our our request is a thoughtful number to be able to put at least let's fix or eight or perhaps more events as part of the umbrella of Folk Fest. So that's, I think, everything I need to let you know. Are there any questions?
Well, just I'll just start with the first one. Now, I'm sure that in arranging this presentation, the clerk would have informed you that we have a budget line for these types of requests, did she not? And probably indicated to you that we've made allocations for twenty twenty one?
No, the the only information that I had was that as no, like she couldn't, no one could give me really clue of what we should ask for, and that any requests over two thousand dollars would require a presentation.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll, I'll tell you, the clerk or someone can give you more details after this presentation. We won't take time now. I see Counselor Cameron has his hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mister Mayor. Just just a question. If you don't get your full allotment of three thousand dollars, are you still, are you still planning on going ahead with the project?
One hundred percent, we have secured enough funding from the town of Prescott to host it and continue with it. It does rely on ticket sales as well, which, again, within our group, we've all done dozens of events like this, so we know what the talent we bring in, there's no challenge in supporting with ticket sales. And not really surprisingly, but pleasantly surprising, the support from the business community was, I'm gonna call it overwhelming, last year. So the funding is in place, we are going ahead with it, and the any additional funding is to grow the grow the total event.
Thank you, thank you.
Are there other questions here? Okay, so just before I thank you, I'll just point out, and you're welcome to stay as a public meeting, but just a little bit later on in our agenda, after the three presentations, we will be having a discussion item of the twenty twenty one Community Grants and Donations Fund. So it's a sort of an update as where we are, and you're welcome to 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 attend the meeting and listen to that discussion. So with those few concluding remarks, I'll thank you very much for your presentation, and it will be discussed at item six A on the agenda. So thank you, and I'm going to stop the presentation now, and I'll move to item number six B on the agenda, which is another twenty twenty one grant request from Connect Youth, and I think Robin Holmes, if you're there, and I don't know whether you are or not, is that you, Robin?
I am, yes, sir. I'm here, yes.
To your face, all right, Robin, you have the floor for ten minutes.
Thank you very much, and if I may, I do have a PowerPoint that I believe the clerk has advised the members of. I would just share my screen. All right, and again, I I do thank the group for allowing me to to present to you tonight, and I apologize to Mersey Oz, this may be somewhat of a duplication as to what he heard in the Affordable Housing Task Force meeting several weeks ago. However, nonetheless, I'm just here to update everybody on what Connect Youth is currently doing for service provision in Grenville County and also throughout the rest of Leeds and Grenville. We do currently have three of our seven staff members residing in the Township of Edwardsburg Cardinal. So we are very grateful to be before you tonight, just updating everybody on our services. I will very quickly, being mindful of our time restriction, advise everyone of what our current programming model looks like in the wake of COVID, the current state of youth homelessness in Leeds and Grenville, and what some specific impacts of COVID nineteen have been on our service delivery throughout Leeds and Grenville. For those of you who are not aware of what Connect Youth is, we were founded in two thousand and one and are fortunate to be celebrating our twentieth year this fall. Our mission is to assist, support, and refer young people in need and to advocate for youth in partnership with our communities. We typically serve ages twelve through twenty five, with our housing program being specific for youth ages sixteen to twenty five. We offer several programs, including the Core Drop-In Program, which is typically at South Grenville High School, as well as the Way Wellness Access for Youth, which is our newer initiative out of Kentville, and also our youth housing program. The core program, as I mentioned, was founded in two thousand and one out of South Grenville High School. That is where we typically have our first contact with many youth. It is designed to provide drop-in services, a safe place where youth can come and meet with our trained staff. They also have access in that space to basic needs items like hygiene, food, clothing. That's where they start referrals to community agencies and associated supports. So whether if a youth makes a referral to, say, mental health supports, we will also then, from that core programming, arrange for transportation or accompaniment if that is a barrier for them. Our staff are all trained in crisis intervention, and they arrange a significant amount of presentations from local agencies such as C S E Consulting, the Health Unit, any agencies that youth may be interested in. We will arrange for those agencies to come in and deliver educational presentations or interactive sessions with the youth in our drop-in space. We have a large, beautiful classroom space at South Grenville High School that we are fortunate to have access to. Unfortunately, because of COVID, we have not had access to that space in over a year at this point. That being said, we have shifted our program delivery so that we are offering core programming services from Saint Paul's Anglican in Prescott, as well as Saint Lawrence Anglican in Brockville, and with the Y M C A of Eastern Ontario. The Y M C A now runs the teen drop-in program from Monday through Friday, and we provide a staff person from Connect Youth for their program so that we can continue having frontline access with youth in a drop-in style. The Wellness Access for Youth, that is one of our newer programs that is a partnership with the Kentville District Hospital. It was designed as a collaborative initiative to bring together many service providers who provide, refer, and support mental health and addiction services for children and youth in North and North Grenville. The goal was that, so if a youth presented to the emergency room at Kentville District Hospital or to a physician in that area, that there would be a collaborative group backing those individuals to provide information and referrals to to community support services. What Connect Youth role in that is we provide the staff person who acts as the navigator. So very similar to our mainstream services, just more of a specific model in partnership with the hospital in Kentville. Our housing program is what most people are hearing a lot about right now, and it has expanded exponentially over the past few years. We now operate five apartment units, two of those in Brockville, one in Kentville, one in Prescott, and one right in Township of Edwardsburg in Spencerville. The units are designed to provide short-term twenty one day stays. That twenty one day stay has been modified significantly in the wake of COVID as a result of how the housing market has shifted, which I will provide some additional information about in the upcoming slides. What the youth are, what the youth receive, sorry, when they're a part of our housing program is, of course, the provision of basic needs items that we typically do through our core program, the life skills training aspect, referrals to community agencies, but they also get intensive case management during the twenty one days. Every youth who is in our housing program is linked with a housing support worker who walks them through their referrals, the housing search for long-term housing, whether that be within Leeds and Grenville or outside of, and really just walks with them through their journey from needing emergency housing to securing long-term residence. What we have seen this year for referrals is seventy nine referrals to Connect Youth since July first, just for housing. Four of those youth were identified as being from Edwardsburg Cardinal at the time of their referral. We do find it very difficult to track where youth are from, because many of them are transient. And while they may be residents of Township of Edwardsburg Cardinal, they may be couch surfing in a larger center such as Prescott or Brockville, even Ganon Oakway, when they come into our services. Therefore, it's very difficult to capture where those youth are from. We have housed twenty four of the youth in our units this year and are providing outreach support to the ones that we cannot currently accommodate, simply because we're at capacity and currently have a waitlist. And we have had, and this slide is actually slightly out of date, I looked at our stats today, and as of this morning, we have eight hundred and forty six supportive interactions with youth since July first of twenty twenty. We are continuously looking at establishing new partnerships. For example, we just established a partnership with the Volunteer Centre of Saint Lawrence Rito, whereas every youth who now resides in one of our transitional apartment units is required to participate in their financial literacy program so that they leave with an understanding of basic financial principles, how to obtain a bank account, the differences between checking and savings, what they might like to invest in in their future, should they obtain income or employment. So those things are, we're really working to solidify solid programming for youth so that every one of them leaves with a very solid foundation under their belt. What we have recognized as some local deficiencies in the housing market right now is that there's not established multi-tier housing models within Leeds and Grenville. We don't have the ability to take youth into our emergency units, then transition them to longer-term transitional supportive housing prior to them living independently in long-term housing. Many of our youth that come in have never lived independently. They don't know how to cook or clean or go to the bank or do anything that would be required of an individual living independently. And there's a lot of pressure on our staff to equip them with those skills while they're kind of in our hands. There's also a significant lack of understanding locally of the the housing first approach and what that means to to essentially be walking alongside people as they make their own decisions regarding their housing, ensuring that housing is provided before we do things like addressing mental health and employment, and really just the the key importance of housing as a foundation. And there's also an increased understanding, a need for an increased understanding regarding homelessness and the underlying causes by the general public. We continue to hear a lot of people saying, there's no homeless youth here, that just doesn't happen in Leeds and Grenville, and we very much see the opposite in our services. The barriers that we're seeing right now that really highlight those deficiencies are specifically in regards to access, transportation, as you're all aware, continues to be a major barrier for youth in rural communities. Technology is a major component now in the wake of COVID, with youth needing a tablet or at least a cellphone to maintain connection with all of the local support services, many of which are not offering in-person services when there's stay-at-home orders. We also see affordability being a major issue with, I was looking this morning again, and there's there's bachelor units going for well in excess of one thousand dollars a month. When we look at the fact that some of our youth need to be short-term on Ontario Works, and that income is just over seven hundred if they have shelter, they're they're really just unattainable financially. We see a lot of youth engaging in really dangerous situations with roommates. We do see an impact of human trafficking, activities that youth are willing to engage in just to have a roof over their head, and that's where the affordability really comes into play. And again, the stigma, people thinking that youth homelessness doesn't exist here, and many landlords are not willing to rent to youth because they don't have references, they can't provide a credit check. We are very fortunate to have a backing from the United Counties and some local landlords that are really shifting their focus to allow our youth to be kind of first on the list for their units, but it continues to be a major, major barrier for our services. And just finally, to wrap things up, what the impacts of COVID nineteen have been on Connect Youth. We see an increased sense of isolation among youth, our youth are already living in very rural communities. Some of these youth, their only connections to people are in the school setting. That's where many of them were getting their only meal of the day in our drop-in. They have the connection with their peer supports, they no longer have that, especially now when, again, today it was announced that the schools will not be resuming in person. There's also the changes to service delivery models of addictions and mental health. Many of our community partners, even probation and parole, are not meeting clients in person as they were before. So it's those in-person interactions that we really find our clients are missing. There's, and as I mentioned, the increased need for technology, and that is really how we've had to be creative in shifting our model. Many of the youth that would typically just walk in through the door at South Grenville High School and have that initial access with us, they can't do that right now, we're not in the school. So we've had to be very creative in being online. We've had a very heavy presence on social media platforms like TikTok and Facebook to really make sure the youth know that we may not be in the school every day, but we're there. We're throughout Leeds and Grenville, we're there to meet their basic needs. And of course, another impact of COVID has been the the drastic changes to the housing market that we're seeing, which is again, just increasing that gap between what what the youth have in their bank account and what they can afford. And that's where we really need to do some education in the community with our youth about what is safe, what is needed right now, and really work alongside them to to find them something that is long-term and sustainable. And of course, finally, the impacts of COVID nineteen being our loss of office space. We, it's a kind of a joke in our agency, but it's very much, it's not a laughing matter that we're running a homelessness program, and we're essentially homeless as an agency right now. We have seven staff that are, we're very, very grateful to have some temporary office space at Saint Lawrence Anglican in Brockville. It is very much multiple staff working out of one large room at a table. We've had staff that have been incredibly resilient over the past year, but to say it's been a challenge would be an understatement. Our staff have been working day in, day out to make sure that youth are housed in Leeds and Grenville, but the conditions that they're doing that in right now are exceptionally challenging. So I end this kind of on a quote, we tend to change up this quote to what we're feeling at the moment, but the one that we're really feeling right now in our agency is that I alone cannot change the world, but I can cast a stone across the waters to create many ripples. And that's what we're really trying to do right now. We recognize that there's many, many agencies trying to make a change, and we're very much trying to to work alongside them to just make small changes with our youth and really to reach out to to local townships to raise awareness about our services, and of course, to seek financial support when possible, but mainly just to raise awareness about what we're doing, how we can all benefit the youth in our community and and work together from here. So I thank everybody very much for the opportunity to present tonight. I have left my contact information at the end of the slide deck if anybody needs to reach out to me, but I am, of course, open to any questions that anybody may have.
Thank you, thank you very much, Robin, and I see that Counselor Cameron has his hand up there.
Yes, thank you, Robin, for your for your presentation and also for your your commitment and your and your and your your function in doing what you do. I do have just a few questions for you. I'm sorry, but I missed the age group that you you more or less look after, but I think it was from twelve through twenty five, am I correct?
Twelve to twenty five is correct for our core services, so for our drop-in model services. For our housing program, we cannot serve youth under age sixteen just because of restrictions with the Child, Youth and Family Services Act. So if we do receive referrals for youth under age sixteen, we automatically work in conjunction with Family and Children Services to support those youth.
Okay, thank you so much. I I do have a little bit of a problem thinking that a twenty five year old is a youth, but but okay, I also understand there are certain circumstances. The the next question I have is regarding employment. Do you do you even have an active employment strategy for people to get jobs? And do you actively help them get jobs in the community?
Absolutely. Employment and securing income is one of the first things that we talk to youth about. The ways in which we do that are through very strong partnerships with both C S E Consulting and the Employment and Education Centre. Any youth that comes into our services, we automatically discuss future goals with them, specifically in regards to education and employment. We have a very strong partnership with the Youth Job Connection Program. And also the We Are The Change Program, which are both being offered through the EEC in Brockville. For youth that are eligible for employment training programs like that. If they're interested, we automatically make a referral, we accompany them to an intake and really encourage them to to pursue programs like that. We actually just had the young man who's residing in our Spencerville apartment right in Edwardsburg Cardinal. Go through the the Youth Job Connect Program and is now completely ready after three weeks of paid pre-employment training. To be out looking for jobs, so we will support him in that job search and the Employment and Education Centre will also continue to support him. So yes, a very, very strong focus on employment.
Wonderful, okay, thank you, thank you, Robin, and I just wanted to add that I've been I've been. Not affiliated, but I've gone to Connect with since two thousand and three when you had, I believe, a working office in our library in in the village of Pergo. Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, and I see this other councillor, Dillavon.
I guess I want. Thank you, Robin, I just wondered, do you people work close as you're saying to councillor Cameron. On education and so on, I'm working with the co-op and apprenticing program for these you.
Yes, so we do, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, we do, we have a strong focus on what. So future exploration with the youth includes not only formal education, whether that be completion of high school, post-secondary. And of course, the the trade being a major focus, we have lots of youth coming in that want more of that co-op, the trades, the hands-on experience. Very familiar with that, my husband went through the full round of apprenticeships. So if that's something that the youth are interested in pursuing, we immediately rely on the resources from the Employment and Education Centre and CSE Consulting. Where they, a lot of the times, they have the resources to, through their job developers, to link youth up with paid job placements in the community, whether that be in trades. Through more of a co-op model, we also have youth who are doing the the PSW work through the Catholic District School Board. And really supporting them in trades work like that, being frontline workers, of course, at this time is very, very valuable. So whatever youth are interested in, whatever path they would like to explore, we have strong local connections that we can support them in. And we're very happy to see youth really branching out, not thinking that college and university is their only option, but really looking into those hands-on. Immediate entry trades, apprenticeships, frontline work that they can get their hands on right now, we're seeing a lot of success in those programs.
Is there anybody else, okay, so thank you very much, Robin, for your presentation, and I noticed that your title is. Infirmal Executive Director, so I don't know how long you've been in your current position, but. When you were making the arrangement for this presentation, did the clerk or anyone else make you aware of the program that we. That we run each year for donations of this nature?
Yes, I am very familiar, I, previous to being the interim executive director, I was on the board of directors for Connect You, so I'm very familiar with the the allocations process for Township of Edwardsburg.
The reason I brought that to your attention is that, I mean, we're going to be reviewing our program, our grants and donations program. At the next item on the agenda, and I noticed that your group was one of the ones that was late to supply the the information. That we require from the previous year to be eligible for donation this year. But I see that we did allocate nine hundred dollars, you had requested three thousand and we allocated nine hundred this year. I just wanted to let you know that we allocated ten thousand dollars for grants and donations this year. Our total requests were over thirty one thousand, so we had to somehow narrow it down. And your group was awarded nine hundred, so, but I also know that I think there's been a fair. Contribution from the county's social services budget, so you're welcome to stay for the for the next items on the agenda when you can see. How we review the grants and donations program for this year, but thank you very much for your presentation. And I'm going to move on to the to the next presentation.
Thank you very much.
So the next presentation is the councillor presentation that was made at the South Grenville Chamber Awards Banquet. And I've asked Wendy and Coyle, our community development coordinator, to present that, to make that presentation to the council, because I was. Extremely impressed at the presentation at the awards banquet, so Wendy, if you would, please.
Just going to share my screen here. Okay, can everyone see the screen, okay?
Yes, yes.
Excellent. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council and Committee, thank you for the opportunity to share this presentation. And hello to everyone else that's joining us here virtually tonight, my name is Wendy, I'm the Community Development Coordinator for the Township. I was asked by our chamber to make a brief presentation last month for their annual awards gala. For those of you that weren't able to attend the gala, our chamber had asked to hear some positive news from Edwardsburg Cardinal, which I'm happy to share again tonight. If you were lucky enough to attend the gala last month and hear this the first time, I hope you enjoy the encore presentation. The last year has been really difficult for all of us, and so I feel like it's it's important to share. Some positive things that are happening in the township and just take a take a moment to do that. My first positive news story comes from our very own Port of Johnstown. The Port of Johnstown is purchased by the Township of Edwardsburg Cardinal in the year two thousand, it operates under our Port Management Committee, including all members of our council. The Deepwater Port supports foreign and domestic trade for local, national and international clients and actively contributes to regional economic development. Last year, the Port of Johnstown started the Community Capital Project Funding Program, committing up to seventy five thousand dollars a year. Over the next four years to capital projects within our community. Last year, this funding helped the South Edwardsburg Recreation Association build fencing around a dog park and also some baseball dugouts. They helped the Centennial Sixty Seven Public School install new playground structures and the Johnstown ATV Club with the purchase of an ATV vehicle. This year, I'm excited to share that funding will be provided for Saint John's United Church first responders to purchase a generator. For Spencerville Business and Community Connections to install signage to support our businesses and a new park bench. And to the Spencerville Mill to complete some building repairs. We're really excited to see the impact these projects will have for our community and I can't wait to see what next year holds. Another exciting announcement in two thousand and twenty came from HFI Pyrotechnics. In July, HFI Pyrotechnics was selected for Canada's Munitions Supply Program. This is Canada's first new addition to the program in at least forty years. HFI was already the sole supplier for all marine location markers for Canada and US Navy. And it's already the world supplier of military and commercial search and rescue markers for other navies, coastguards and security forces around the globe. This agreement solidifies the source of supply in Canada for essential pyrotechnic material products and services. It helps to sustain sixty five highly trained and skilled jobs in Edwardsburg Cardinal. Now later in the year, we heard from Greenfield Global. Greenfield Global is Canada's highest producer of fuel ethanol and a global leader in the production of high purity specialty alcohol and solvents. They produce raw materials that are used by other businesses in our everyday lives and importantly these days, in the health industry. In October of two thousand and twenty, Greenfield shared an announcement from their ethanol facility in our Johnstown Industrial Park. With a seventy five million dollar expansion, Greenfield will begin producing one hundred million litres per year of high purity alcohols. Including USP grade alcohol. This will be used in hand sanitizer and in the medical field, supporting vaccine manufacturers and frontline workers across the province. Some of the funding came from a grant under the Ontario Together Fund and expansion will create upwards of twenty full-time jobs in Edwardsburg Cardinal. We're looking forward to supporting Greenfield with their expansion and proud to have high purity alcohols made right here in TWPEC. Now, speaking of alcohol and hand sanitizer. King's Lot Craft Distillery on Newport Drive is a small batch distillery that uses one hundred percent locally grown grain. And organic ingredients to create spirits in small batches. I want to take you back to the very early days of the pandemic in March two thousand and twenty. There was no hand sanitizer in sight, not a Lysol wipe or disinfectant on store shelves. King's Lot quite literally came to our rescue by adopting their production site to make hand sanitizer for residents. Our fire departments, our hospitals and other frontline workers, some proceeds, by the way, were given to our local food bank. And this is where I'd like to begin, a short story of how our local businesses came together over the past year to support each other. Promote each other and lend a helping hand from one entrepreneur to another. Because one of the many businesses the Small Batch Distillery on Newport Drive helped to supply hand sanitizer to was the LCBO. We have three LCBO retail outlets at Edwardsburg Cardinal, now that Angelo's Truck Stop made the addition in two thousand and twenty. But I want to draw your attention to the Cardinal LCBO. Take a look at this display, it reads our local pairing Flying New Hard Cider and your favorite pizza from Nikki's Place. I just love that this store found an opportunity to support local businesses, Flying New Hard Cider is made right here in Spencerville. And Nikki's Place Restaurant makes really great pizza and homestyle meals right here in Cardinal. The team at Nikki's Place and all of our restaurants worked hard over the past year to adapt to changing regulations and maintain a safe environment for visitors. We're grateful they could be open and provide takeout options when necessary. Nikki actually reached out to our office in December and asked to help restring the lights on her redecorations in downtown Cardinal. She organized restringing the lights so they could go up brighter and cheerier for what was going to be a difficult holiday season for so many people. The lights were donated by Virchill's Home Hardware and the Cardinal Festival Committee. The owner also took on some renovations to her storefront with some funding from our Township's Community Improvement Plan. Nikki's Place took advantage of the Property and Facade Improvement Program, where qualifying applicants can receive a rebate of up to fifty percent of the cost of improvements to their building facade. Like windows, doors, brickwork or landscaping. The Community Improvement Plan is in place to encourage improvements and revitalization to our downtown core areas. There are programs in place to help with planning and building permit fees or to create or restore housing units in the second floor of a commercial building. I welcome our local businesses to reach out to me to chat about our Community Improvement Plan if they feel that one of our programs could help with some improvements. We have funding available this year and there's more information at twpec.ca. Some of the businesses that have benefited recently are African Brands Honey, GT Automotive, Mulder's Machine and Welding and the new Spencerville Pharmacy have used CIP funding. For new signage on their building, and this is where I want to continue our story. We're so happy that Evan and the Spencerville Pharmacy team chose to make South Grenville their home. They worked throughout two thousand and twenty to find a location and settled on this once vacant building in downtown Spencerville. They've moved in and just opened this year, much to the delight of our community. It's obvious the team here is community minded and are working to support each other and to support local businesses. They recently announced a local partnership with Spa Next Door by providing a room for their spa services. Spa Next Door will be offering services from within Spencerville Pharmacy. Sadly, due to provincial orders, they announced last week that this partnership is on hold, but they do plan to resume when the orders are lifted. So as soon as we're able to visit, Spa Next Door is a South Grenville spa in a rural setting with lots of love for local. The owner Rebecca participated in the Province's Shop Local campaign, along with thousands of others across Ontario, including our councillors. Rebecca also supports local businesses in our everyday life, celebrating her child's birthday while we're all in lockdown, can't be easy. But she partnered with Little Sisters to organize a Zoom cooking party with her daughter's friends. Speaking of birthdays at Little Sisters, Little Sisters recently celebrated their third year in Spencerville. Aside from fun birthday parties and amazing Italian cuisine with a twist, this restaurant is a leader in community connections. Owner Gina Vacchio received Edwardsburg Cardinal's Citizen of the Year Award in two thousand and twenty. Recognizing it was a challenging or unsafe for some to visit a grocery store. Gina pulled together care packages of groceries that people could have delivered from a restaurant. The care packages also made thoughtful gifts, there were some generous donations made towards these packages and the owner worked with the food bank. To find and deliver to local residents that needed some support. I know that when I visit Little Sisters, I'm always going to find local treats there. Their wells feature work from local artists, I can buy cookies from a local baker and I've recently spotted. Exclusive flavors of Floss Cotton Candy Care made in Edwardsburg Cardinal. Last year, they joined with other local businesses to host a Rib Fest event with all appropriate approvals from our health unit. Raising money for the South Grenville Food Bank at the Spencerville Mill and Museum. Now, the museum made a difficult decision last year to stay closed, but they continue to reach out to our community online. Right now, they're building an exhibit called the COVID nineteen Challenge History in the Making. And they're asking us to share stories, videos, photos and art that shows how we adapted during the pandemic. I want to give a shout out to Photogenic Photos by Design, a local photographer that holds seasonal family photo sessions at the mill, essentially promoting the location with her work. I've also spotted the work of Photogenic at Spencerville Home Hardware. At a time when traditional photos with Santa were impossible, the team at Spencerville Home Hardware came through for our four-legged friends. And teamed up with Photogenic for pup pics with Santa, the money raised at this event was donated to Connect Youth. And hi, Robin, we're really fortunate to have Connect Youth and other community groups and charitable organizations supporting our community. This group worked really hard last year to reach out to youth with virtual events and care packages. I saw all of your promotions and opportunities to connect with youth online last year and really just give a shout out to you guys for a job well done. Edwardsburg Cardinal supported local charities and community groups with our community grant program. In two thousand and twenty, we gave away over eight thousand dollars plus in-kind support to groups like the South Grenville Food Bank. Connect Youth, the Spencerville Mill Foundation, SBCC, Cardinal Community Festival Committee, Centennial Sixty Seven Public Schools, Skip Ventures. Girls Inc. of Upper Canada, Spencerville Scouts, the South Edwardsburg Recreation Association and more. Applications are closed now for this year and council is now tasked tonight with reviewing applications to provide more support to community groups in two thousand and twenty one. So I know I've only mentioned a fraction of our local businesses and their contributions here in my ten minutes. But the story could go on forever and I hope it goes on forever, it should. It was an honor to be able to be a part of recognizing our businesses for their hard work over the past year at the Chamber Gala, Awards Gala. And I hope everyone here tonight feels encouraged to just continue the support for all things local, thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, Wendy, now, has anybody got any questions for Wendy, you can see that that was an excellent presentation, councillor Cameron.
Wendy, just a, just a comment, many kudos, job well done, you've made our township proud, thank you.
Thank you.
Well done, Wendy, well done.
Any other gentleman?
No, that's good job.
Well, thanks very much, Wendy, and I wanted to have that presentation made part of the record and it's now on the. It's now a part of the council meeting and it'll be shared on the township website and. We can refer people to that YouTube video to to get the full flavor and let me just say in concluding that. Yours was a, one of the best presentations at the awards banquet, so thank you. So with those few words, I'm going to thank Wendy and move on to the next items on our agenda, which is item number six A. Which Wendy referred to and the other two presentations referred to, which is our Community Grants and Donations Program now. The Administration Department has provided us with this wrap up, if I can say it that way. To our grants program and you have a briefing note in front of you there here, which basically reviews all of the. Factors and information that we took into account when we allocated the ten thousand dollars from the program. During our, I think it was our March meeting. And so are there any questions with regard to this, with this, with regard to this briefing note? And I, okay, Mr. CIO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, tonight is the is the opportunity for for committee to review the grants and 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 perform the allocation.
Oh, we haven't done it yet?
We haven't done it yet, no, that that is tonight.
Oh, okay, I thought we had already done it, that's because one year wars into the next.
I I I I believe that typically we do have it in March, but I think we moved April this year.
Okay, so I think the 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 pertinent information that we need to have in front of us then for this discussion is the is our pages thirty seven, thirty six. Thirty six is the grants, is the two thousand and twenty one community grants and donations, the requests. And so there's, it's important that that be allocated. So I think the first thing to draw your attention to as the as the treasurer has outlined is that. There were a number of applicants that came in with their financial reports from last year, a little bit late. But the staff did. But the staff did acknowledge and allow some of them to come forward and we have some of them in front of us tonight. So, where am I here? Thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six. So I think the pages that we need to look at then is, is thirty-one. Page thirty-one, page thirty-six, rather. So, you can see what's requested. You can see the value of the in-kind that has been basically acknowledged. And now we have to go through the process of allocating these amounts. Now, to start with, does the staff have a, I see a staff total here of $30,640 is the total request. Is that, is that correct? Can I get that as a firm starting point?
Mr. Chair, I, I believe that is correct. That is the starting point is $30,640.
All right. So, and the allocation that we have available is $10,000. So I need to have some discussion here and, yes, go ahead.
Yes, just a question, Mr. Mayor. Regarding the in-kind request, is the in-kind request also part of the $10,000? Or is the $10,000 for a donation plus in-kind?
So, through, through, through the chair, I'll defer to the clerk to, to, to answer that question. Thank you.
So, through the chair, the $10,000 allotted is for the financial contributions that council is looking to provide to the organizations. The in-kind request is outside of the $10,000 and it's usually staff working it into their daily schedules. The department managers working at the schedules to help the organization. So it goes above and beyond. But we've always been very helpful with the community organizations and they're still willing to do that. In 2019, the policy was changed to grant staff the authorization for the in-kind requests. The information provided is just to provide committee and council an idea of the approximate value associated with those in-kind requests that total in the overall budget.
Thank you. That answers my question.
We can take it from that, that all of the in-kind requests have been acknowledged and granted. And we don't need, and they're not cash flow items, direct cash flow items. We don't write a check for those amounts. So, we're only writing checks for the grants and donations requested column. So, I need, I need to water this down a bit. I'm starting at ten, thirty thousand and I've got to get to ten. I need some suggestions here. Go ahead.
For, for discussion, my, my, my choices would be the Grenville Historical Society for 500, the Friends of the Windmill for 990, the Spencerville Agriculture Society 2000, and I'm going to say fifteen hundred for the Folk Fest. And support youth at the South Edwardsburg Public School. I'm going to, I'm going to suggest 1,000 on that. I'm going to suggest 2,000 on the Prescott Figure Skating. I'm going to suggest 1,000 to the Food Bank. And that is, that is my suggestions at, at the moment, Mr. Mayor. And, and again, it's all over to the session.
All right. And if council members or members of the committee would like to take a look at page forty-two, they will be able to see what was allocated to each of these groups last year versus what was requested. So we got that with page forty beside page thirty-six. Now, I'm looking for further direction here. So, I'm going to have to jump in here. Spensable English Country Dance, they're not requesting anything, so that's an easy one. Grenville County Historical Society, I don't see that they made a request last year. Grenville County Historical Society, but they're requesting 500 this year. Any thoughts on that one?
That was on my list, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I'm sorry. What was the number?
Five hundred.
Five hundred?
I have five, five on my list as well.
Okay. And the next we have Friends of the Windmill Point asking for $900 this year. And I'm just comparing to last year and I see that last year they didn't make a request or at least they weren't granted a request. And then Spencerville Mill Foundation, and I think they did make a request last year of 900 and they were granted 1,000. And they're asking for another thousand this year. Was that on your list, councillor?
Spensable, no, not on mine. Because, you see, they came in late.
Yes, they came in late.
I have it as 500 on mine.
You have it as 500? I'll put yours in at 500. Spensable Agricultural Society, now, last year, Spensable Agricultural Society, where are they here? I'm, I'm looking for them on page forty. I don't see them on page forty because I don't think they had a live fest, communities festival last year.
Through the chair, they didn't apply last year.
Sorry, again? Say again?
Through the chair, they did not apply for a grant last year.
Right. So this is an application for 2,000 this year. Anybody have a number? John?
I've got a thousand. I have a thousand.
All right. We'll put, we'll put a thousand in for our first round here. And Upper Canada Folk Fest.
I have a thousand. I have a thousand.
Now, and so, because they're not in red, I'll take it that they either are a new applicant or that they, they are a new applicant. Okay, fair enough. And the South Edwardsburg Public School is requesting 2,000. South Edwardsburg Public School Council, I see South Edwardsburg Recreation, but I don't see that they made a request last year.
No, they knew. I have it for 500. I added a 500 as well.
Okay, I have a couple of 500s there. And you're, you're prepared to change yours to 500?
I am, yes.
All right. Now, Prescott Figure Skating Club, and they did, they did not make a request last year. And so consequently, this is, I know that we've donated to them before, but they're asking for, may pardon?
We donated to Spensable, not Prescott.
Oh, oh, we donated to Spensable, not Prescott. Okay. So this is a new one then? Any suggestions here? And I don't know the relationship between those two figure skating.
They're not related.
They're not related, okay?
I have, I have them at 2,000, Mr. Mayor. Because last year, they didn't receive, didn't either apply or receive. But remember, last year at this time, they were shut down because of COVID.
Right.
They've also been shut down partially this year as well, in 2021. So, they do need the money. There's, 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 there's the COVID to blame for that.
Well, at best case, they're only going to get half a season.
Correct.
I, personally, I don't think we should be donating to them.
It's, it's not, not, not from the, from our.
They're renting ice from us, but.
Well, yes. They, they certainly have a lot of people from Edwardsburg Cardinal.
Yeah, absolutely. It does. Like with the kids skate program and stuff like that. Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, we're, we're, to be quite truthful, our township is lucky to have them.
Okay, well, can we put them in at a thousand because we've got to get to thirty, we've got to get to 10,000 here?
I have it as a thousand.
All right.
I'll add them to the thousand.
Okay. Now, Spensable Scouting Group, now, Spensable Scouting Group, I'm looking for them for last year and I don't see.
I don't think they ever did. Because in, in kind, is that right, Rebecca?
They got 2,500 in kind. Did they not apply? It looks like they didn't apply last year, Rebecca.
The Spensable Scouting Group, last year, received $1,000.
Well, we, they applied for a thousand. We gave them 500 last year.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah. And this year, they're applying for 1,500. Can I suggest we try to give them the same as we gave them last year, which is 500?
That's what I have.
All right.
Spensable Scouting?
Yeah, now, and remembering that they were late getting their financial information to us. And Girls Inc. of Upper Canada, last year, applied for 2,000. We gave them 1,000. They're asking for 1,000 again this year. Can we put a number in?
500?
Let's put 500 in and see where we are into the first round. And Centennial 67 Public School Parent Council, last year, they applied for 2,000 and we gave them 500. They're applying for 2,000 again this year. Can we use 500 again?
I have the same.
500?
You have the same. And now we're back to Connect Youth, Robin's group. And Connect Youth last year applied for 500 and we gave them 500. They're applying for 5,000 this year. So, can we put in the same as last year, 500, just to see where we are for the first round?
I should have over.
I'm comfortable with a thousand.
Okay, well, I have some, I have some other information for the committee that I won't bring out until the next round. But they have been the beneficiary of a fair good number of dollars through the United Counties of Leeds and Grenville. I'll bring those numbers forward a little bit later. So now I'm down to Food for All Food Bank. And interestingly enough, last year, they applied for 2,000 and we gave them 1,000. And this year, they're applying for two again. And I think councillor Cameron, you had a thousand as well, did you not?
I did, yes.
And again, as well, the Food for All Food Bank has been the beneficiary of fair substantial grants through the United Counties from.
I have them at a thousand as well.
You have them from a thousand, okay?
Getting back to Connect Youth then, what, what are we, I have them down for 2,000.
Okay, well, let's, let's wait.
We'll come back.
Yeah, let's wait until we get through this first round. I, I hope that somebody is keeping tabs of this because I'm, I'm just trying to run the meeting here. RNJ Youth Services, RNJ Youth Roost Services. So Rebecca, if you'd just remind me that, what RNJ Youth Services is?
It is an organization run by Reverend Norman. And he has created a youth program that supplies youth kits to Leeds-Grenville youth between eight and seventeen years of age for recreation and leisure activities. It's a, it's a new application this year.
New application, asking for 1,700. Can we put it in at 700 and see what our total is at the end?
Just to comment, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
That, these are, this service is also inside of the township?
Outside the township?
Yes.
I don't have it at any.
I don't have it at any.
I have it at zero.
Okay, so, okay, number of, okay, so we'll put it in at zero because it's outside the township and go on to the next one, which is South Edwardsburg Recreation Association. And last year, they applied for 1,250 and we awarded 1,300. So they're applying for 1,700 this year. So can I put them in at 1,000 this year till I see what my total is on the first round?
I would say 500 myself, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, well, 500, all right. We'll put in 500 and see what our total is on the first round here. And then Spensable TNR, which looks like a new application again this year, is it Rebecca? No?
Through the chair, they didn't apply last year. However, they did apply the year before and we did not grant them money. They are one of those organizations that don't necessarily fall into any of the clear categories. So it is up to the committee and council's decision.
Yes, and I see in 2019, their full, their full title was Spensable and Area Stray Cats TNR Project. So it has more to do with apparently animals than, and, and basic intent of our money is to try to support youth and youth activities first and foremost, and then other activities. So I'm, I'm inclined to just leave that one blank for now. And then the Friends of, Friends of Edwardsburg Cardinal Library, Spensable Branch. And that's Friends of the Library. I don't see that they made an application last year. But I thought we did get one, at one point, give them some money, Friends of the Library.
They're not asking for it.
They're not asking for any, Mr. Mayor?
Not asking.
Oh, just all in kind, right?
Yeah.
And then the Johnstown ATV Club is asking for 240. And last year, they asked for 240 and we gave them 300. So they're asking for 240.
I have them at 240.
Put them in at 240. And then the Groveton Royal Orange Lodge. Now, this is a new application, I believe. I don't believe I've seen that name before.
It was there before and we turned it down.
It was?
Yeah.
But it was last year, the year before.
All right. Well, let me ask if the staff can give me a number from this first round.
I have it 7240.
7240 without.
I have that, Connect Youth? I have it at 7240 without Friends of Windmill Point, without Spensable Mill, and without Connect Youth.
Without Connect Youth?
Yeah.
Well, I think the first thing we should do is get some money to Connect Youth. Where are they? See.
I don't know. Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll defer to the treasurer, but I, I have it a little bit higher than that.
Okay.
Yeah, I have them at 1,000 on that first round.
Yes.
Connect Youth. Okay, so what is your total for the first round?
I, I have as a total for the first round, 9,730. But I, I will defer to the, to, to the treasurer because I have the Historical Society at 500 and Friends of Windmill at 990.
I have zero on the Friends of Windmill.
So, so just so we don't get our wires all crossed up again, let's go first of all, down the list. And Melanie, as we go down the list, would you just check your list against the list that I'm going to go down? And then give, and give us a total at the end?
Just before we start, I do have a total of $10,230.
We all go to the beginning?
Okay, so, all right, so, so let's start with Grenville County Historical Society. What number do you have, Melanie?
500.
Yes, 500. Friends of the Windmill Point, do you have a number, Melanie?
990.
Sorry?
900, 990.
990. Spensable Mill Foundation, do you have a number there, Melanie?
500.
500, yes. And then Spensable Agricultural Society, I have 1,000. Do you agree?
Yep.
Upper Canada Folk Fest, I have a number of 1,500. Do you agree?
Correct.
And then South Edwardsburg Public School Council, I have a number of 500. Do you agree?
Yep.
Prescott Figure Skating Club, I have a number of 1,000. Do you agree?
Spensable Skating Club, Prescott, Prescott Figure, Prescott Figure Skating, 1,000?
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so it's written there. Spensable Scouting Group, 500, I have 500. Do you agree with that one?
Yeah.
And Girls Inc. of Upper Canada, I have a number of 500. Do you agree?
Correct.
And then Centennial 67 Public School Parent Council, I have a number of 500. Do you agree?
Yep.
And then Connect Youth Inc., I have a number of 1,000. Do you agree?
Yep.
And then Food for All Food Bank, I have a number of 1,000. Do you agree?
Yep.
RNJ Youth Services, I have zero.
Correct.
South Edwardsburg Recreation Association, I have a number of 500. Do you agree with that?
500, yeah.
And then Spensable TNR, I have zero.
Yep.
Friends, Friends of the Edwardsburg Cardinal Library Spensable Branch, I have zero. And then Johnstown ATV Club, I have 240. Do you agree with that one?
Yes.
Okay, now, again, what is your total?
$10,230.
Okay, so you still have 10,230?
Yeah, I do. I, yes, I, I realize that for the Folk Fest, now we have a thousand, not 1,500, so.
Okay, so.
That's for mine. I, I made that same mistake too. I only added this thousand.
Okay, so now we're at 10,230. The obligation is to remove it, to remove $230 to get to 10,000. Any suggestions?
Johnstown ATV Club.
What's that?
Johnstown ATV Club.
And just remove it?
Remove it. We gave them 240 last year. It was supposed to be for this and they asked 240 again this year for this again. We bought them this last year.
Okay, so we're going to remove Johnstown ATV Club?
Yeah.
That makes us $10 short of 10,000, does it not, Melanie?
That is correct.
Okay, is everybody satisfied with that?
Yes.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the 2021 Community Grants and Donations as per this latest round? I have councillor Cameron moving. Is there a seconder? I have Mr. Bradley seconding. And those in favor. And the motion is carried. And thank you very much for the briefing note. And I was 100% con- I was a hundred percent convinced in my own mind, even as I was reading the briefing note. That we had done this once already this year. I I hate to.
Over, make sure your head dance a little bit.
Yes, I did. I made it, I made a full pause. All right, so we're moving on. And the next item on the agenda is uh the Committee of this uh adjustment decision. On uh six twenty-one East Street, and I wanted to put this in front of the committee. Uh, just so that the committee would see the workings of the situation. So there's a number of items in the in the briefing package. The first is the Committee of Adjustment Public Hearing Notice. This is the notice that goes out to all landowners, is it within six hundred sixty meters or six hundred meters? Mister Chair, Mister Cao?
Uh, through 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 the chair, sixty meters.
Sixty meters, goes out to all property owners within sixty meters. And uh as you will see from what we've already learned, uh that uh. And I did ask for a copy of the mailing list that it was sent to. Uh, did did we get that mailing list?
Uh, through 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 the chair on page fifty are the addresses of where it was sent.
Okay, on page fifty.
Fifty of one thirty-two?
Oh, that's what, oh, that's what that list was, I had no idea what that list was. I saw it, but it didn't, it didn't make any sense to me. So that's who got the notices. And of all of those people on that list, there wasn't one of them that showed up at the Committee of Adjustment meeting. And then the next item that we have in our package is the uh is the Notice of Decision. Of the committee with reasons. And uh signed by members of the committee now, uh Mister Grant, can you tell us who the name of the first? Signature is, the left-hand signature?
Uh, the, that is Tim Nason.
Tim Nason, N-A-S-O-N, yes. No, the gentleman, well, just can't read the signature. All right, so the next, beyond that, uh was the uh. Application, I think, for the uh. Building, and you see that drawing. And then you have all the prescriptions uh required in that zone. And you can see uh from the prescriptions on page forty-seven of of that zone. That the application, the building permit application does uh does meet all of the applications for the zone. Uh, it's also on page forty-six. So I'm putting this forward because, you know, I have problems with the application. I have problems with this type of development, I don't have to tell you. The problems that we got into at seventy-two David Street, or whatever the number was on David Street. Uh, and I fear that this is the same sort of a situation again. But really, there is nothing that can be done about it other than to appeal the decision. Of the uh of the Adjustment Committee to the LPAT. And uh I certainly can't do that as mayor. At least it wouldn't look very good. Uh, so I'm looking for discussion here, so Deputy Mayor.
Uh, through the chair to the CAO, what um, you'll, in reading through everything. Uh, that I could find, everything complies to uh current zoning, current bylaw, other than. Uh, the set, the um, the lot coverage. Um, uh, so that'd be my first question, am I right in that's the only? Really, the only need for variance was the lot coverage?
So through 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 the chair, that is, that is correct.
Okay, and can I continue?
Yeah, man.
So what, so it's eleven percent, am I right in that, eleven percent more coverage than than what would normally be allowed?
Through the chair, that is correct.
Okay, so. At what point does that become a minor variance versus versus a large variance? What defines that as being a mi- a variance in minor in nature?
Well, ti- ti- typically, it's certainly not necessarily by percentage, but if we were gonna use percentage, I would say if uh. Uh, if you were looking at about eighty or eighty-five percent of the lot coverage, that would certainly uh no longer be a minor variance.
So this doesn't take into consideration, they may wanna build a deck. On the back or anything like that, like this is ju- and would a deck fall under? Like, if they apply after this is built, does a deck, does a deck, is it considered lot coverage then as well? Or if they wanna put in a swimming pool or something like that?
Uh, that is, that that is correct.
That'd be considered part of lot coverage?
That is correct.
Uh, what about, uh, can I continue? Sorry.
Man.
What about the driveway in the front? Cause it doesn't show a driveway, it just does the the setbacks, and it shows a garage at the front. But it doesn't actually show whether there is going to be, because there's adequate room at the front for two vehicles in each driveway. Uh, but it doesn't actually show where pavement goes, is pavement considered uh part of lot coverage?
No. Driveway would not be considered lot coverage.
Okay.
There's, there's actually two garages in front.
Yeah, there's two, well, one for each one, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Councillor Cameron and then Councillor Hunter.
What what bothers me is is the five-foot setback on each side. That 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 does bother me. Um, it's my, it's my understanding that. Over the past few years, we've had a problem on on Cherry, I believe it was Cherry Street, with the building there. With uh with a minor variance. David Street, that was Committee of Adjustment as well, now again on East Street. Boy. Um. With all the, with all the issues that we've been through with the prior two uh properties. I I'm I am hesitant here, I I I really am. We've got it, we've got an issue with 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 people in the village of Cardinal now with very close lot lines. And we've got problems like water drainage, uh. I I I I am very concerned about this. Um. And just to uh answer Deputy Mayor Deschamps. At the back on this drawing on page forty. I guess.
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, there is a very light pencil line for, it looks like decks. It could be there, and it is shown on the bigger copy that we have as well. Uh, there, so. There's obviously going to be a deck put there, or two decks put there. But that doesn't take into consideration now the coverage of the of the uh. Um, I, Mister Mister Mayor, I'm 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 just not, I'm just not comfortable with this, with the with the five-foot uh side yard setbacks.
Councillor Hunter.
I have a real problem with discretion on this all altogether. It meets all all our bylaws, five foot on the side, that's what the bylaw calls calls for.
Yep.
We can't start picking on a developer, whether he's had trouble someplace else or not. If he meets all the zoning and this minor variance here, that you drive through Cardinal, how many more duplexes have? As other contractors built in Cardinal, and there's been minor variances going to bring here every one of them. So. Can't start picking and choosing, for this one, this went through all the proper channels and was passed.
Well, but I I'm just gonna stop you there, because that's one of the reasons that I want this on the agenda. And the reason is this. We are right now in the process of redoing our zoning bylaw and the prescriptions in that zoning bylaw. The existing zoning bylaw provides for a five-foot, five, five feet side yard. And this meets it. Now, my question to the council is, is five feet adequate? Should we be looking at changing that setback? When we're redoing our zoning bylaw? In my opinion, that's a teachable moment. We've, that is much too narrow. Much too narrow, and it, look at the problems that it's causing us. I mean, you haven't seen the recent spate of emails from. East of seventy-two David Street to myself and Mister Grant. I mean, and go take a look, I mean, it's causing problems. And nor have you seen the spate of emails between two other properties on Middle Street in Cardinal. Where exactly the same situation is happening. And the, you know, one individual is. Moving his downspout to face the property line, and the water is coming down the downspout. And across the property line onto the other person's property. So the reason, one of the reasons I'm bringing it up, well, actually two. Number one, there is a mechanism to stop this, and that's to appeal the decision to the LPAT. But I, in my mind, that's a council decision, not mine. Although I could, if I was an individual, a private individual, not sitting as mayor of this township. I I wouldn't hesitate, but as mayor, I'm not gonna do that. But when it comes to the zoning bylaw, I think we have to instruct our planners. And and the people that are doing the work on these prescriptions to somehow get control of this situation. I mean, quadruplexes and triplexes and things like that, they should all be coming to us for approvals in my mind. So you want it in again, and then I'll give councillor Hunter a a re- uh an opportunity to rebut there. I should give him the rebut.
Go ahead, no, no, I'm fine.
You should have an opportunity to rebut here.
I I don't question your purpose. The point is, is I don't believe this is the proper way to do it, this is we. We have a problem with side yards and stuff, that's be, we discussed when we're we're resetting our planning and stuff, not picking. Uh, on a developer's project that he has under underway.
Okay.
That's sending the wrong message.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
So I was, I was gonna echo that a little, a little bit, is that uh. One difference between what what happened in Spencerville and what's going on in Cardinals, Cardinals School Services versus. Uh, what went on in Spencerville is is well-inseptic, so I see those uh as two very different uh beasts. However, um, um, uh, it it appears to me, like, I've spoken against these style buildings since. Uh, we did the uh original one on maybe Hoy Street or something like that. I I spoke against the one on the highway too, I just think they're not in the nature of what the neighborhoods are. Um, so I agree with with that, I I don't like it because it's the nature, however. Um, our zoning bylaw allows it, and and this developer has found something that. Uh, short of a minor variance uh in lot coverage, which. You know, I don't like that either. Um, I I may have made a different choice, but but other than that, there's no. Um, uh, like he's complying with with absolutely every zoning bylaw, so. Uh, I think you're right, Mister Mayor, that now's a, now's the right time, this is a perfect example of of if we want to change the nature of neighborhoods. Uh, and keep them as single-family homes and not this kind of intensification. Um, then it's, then it's a good, it's a good time to do that. Having said that, though, um, if this was a, you know, a smaller footprint, let's say he moved it in two feet on either side. He could still put a granny suite in the backyard, under, under, or a, or a tiny home in the backyard. Uh, under what we changed in the official plan and and in the zoning bylaws, because. Uh, we're speaking for granny suites and tiny homes, so while we don't like this as a duplex, I'm not sure that, you know. Even in taking it a little bit further, um, you know, he could stick a tiny home back there, so, like. Those things concern me as well.
I guess, just, just replying quickly to the concept of the lot coverage, I mean, there is no question. And I don't know what percentage of the lot the existing uh building takes up. But there's no question that there's are, that there are two decks at the back end as well. I mean, if you look at the application for a building permit, the drawing that was submitted, there are clearly two decks shown, they're not labeled as such. But that's what they are, right outside the back doors. And uh, you know, do the, does that consume or cut into the forty-one percent coverage that he's already been allowed, I don't know. Anyway, any other comments, and then I'm gonna move on.
I I'd just like clarification uh on on one, two, actually, two items. Um, on page forty-six, uh, under minimum yard requirement for main building. Uh, we have uh the front yard, which is fine, and exterior side yard and interior side yard. Could I just get clarification on those two? Um, those two headings?
Is uh.
So what is an exterior side yard?
Certainly, uh, through 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 the chair, so an exterior side yard would typically be a corner lot.
Correct.
So you 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 would have one that would be frontage, and then the 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 side yard that's fronting the other street would be. An exterior side yard. And the interior side yard is is. A non uh corner. Yes, and and just, and and just maybe to 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 let you know, so the uh. The Meadowlands subdivision that 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 I'm in, uh, I would probably have a a five-foot interior side yard.
In that subdivision?
In that subdivision.
And the other person next door to you, the same?
Uh, yeah, well, yeah, ne- next door is actually a corner lot, but yes, the other, the other side, yes, there's. So 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 there 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 is, there is probably uh at most ten feet between uh be- between our buildings.
Right.
Okay, so that's normal.
Just to.
Yeah, okay.
Put it into context in that.
I mean, there's a complete drainage plan for that subdivision, no?
So so I think, so 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 I think that is is one of the areas with respect to grade uh grading and drainage. That that's an important component of the of of the building permit uh process that needs to be. Like, for for instance, in the Meadowlands subdivision, there 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 is a grading and and drainage plan. And 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 those elevations that are required to be that.
And and so that.
We have swales in the, typically in between a number of those lots.
And so that was another question that I had asked the CAO prior to coming to the meeting. Uh, and it was this, is there a, is there a storm sewer on that street? And my understanding is that there is a storm sewer on on East Street. So my my question was, well, can we, as a condition of the building permit, require? That the, that the drainings from the roof goes, the the two roofs, I mean, it's sloped each way. Can we require that that fasten into our stormwater system? Rather than be directed next, rather than be directed sideways or to the street? You know, can we require that? And I I didn't, I don't know enough, I don't know enough about that, the answer to that question, go ahead.
Yes, uh, Mister Mayor, thank you, I also need another clarification, on the five-foot uh uh side yard. Is that from the foundation or is that from the eve?
Uh, so, uh, so, I'm I I I'm gonna go in, if I, if I'm incorrect, I'll I'll have the Community Development Coordinator. Uh, correct me, but I believe that uh that uh the five feet is from the structure. And there 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 is a a little bit less uh uh setback with respect to 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 the overhang in the eaves.
Yeah, because if somebody had a large overhang, that could almost go right to the property.
Well, no, there 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 there, there there is some requirements to be uh back from the from the property line with the with the overhang.
Okay, I just don't see it on that.
Uh, it may, it may not be on this particular uh portion.
Okay.
Okay, so the chair's looking for a direction here, I'm not, my, you know, I don't wanna beat this horse to death, but I sure wanted it brought forward here. Uh, if there's, if if council is of the opinion that there's no, uh, nothing that can really be done here. I'm prepared to move on.
Was anybody at the public meeting?
Apparently, I haven't seen the minutes of the public meeting, but uh I'm told that there was nobody at the public meeting other than. The members of the Committee of Adjustment and and whoever took the meeting.
And the land or the developer, right?
I don't even know whether the developer was there.
Sure, I I do believe that the developer was there, but I'll have the uh Community Development Coordinator speak to that uh on on those attendants.
Uh, she's still here, one of them?
Yes, thank you, if I may through the chair, um, the developer was in attendance, and there was another gentleman. Um, in attendance who didn't have objections, but was there to just observe the the meeting.
And was he one of the property owners that was circulated?
He wa- no, he was a broker um for the individual that sold the property. Um, to a neighbor.
Oh, I see, okay, all right.
Because I, the reason I brought that up, I'm shocked that you're getting phone calls and complaints from residents within the community. And then nobody shows up to the public, public, public meeting.
Yes, I know, but it's two different areas, the 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 pressure that we're getting is all from Spencerville and the problems on David Street. This is in Cardinal.
I I interpret it, but my fault.
Okay, uh, so no, no action to be taken here, I'm going on. Okay, uh, so no, no action to be taken here. I'm going on.
Well, I think, I think, Mr. Mayor, if, if we're going to take any action now is the perfect time when we're looking at the zoning bylaw. To make some suggestions about this.
Well, and uh, the community development coordinator and the chair of the CDC committee are here. Uh, and, and I'm not sure that this is the right time to try to, to uh, to talk about zoning bylaw. But.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. But I, but I, as, you know, as the chair of that, I do think, and this has been a discussion. You know, uh, in relation to David's Street, but bringing it back to, we've had issues with. What one of the, what one of these turned into on the highway two. Um, they, they certainly have been issues and we've certainly made allowances to do them, but I'm not sure that, that, you know. For an extra water hookup and an extra sewer hookup, it really is something that we wanna deal with all the time. So I think it raises an interesting. Uh, there's not much we can do about this one, but for our future land use planning, which is what, what really what we're trying to do with the zoning bylaw. Um, you know, is it in the best interest of, of our, of our town or, or citizens? Is it something that they want their community, their communities built around? Uh, that kind of intensification. And I, I think it warrants a discussion, CDC prefer.
So I'm gonna leave it up to you to make sure that discussion happens.
And the five feet on the neighbor presumably, uh, that's ten, that's not very much. So if you decide to revise that and squeeze it. Let's say increase by, if you say eight. That's on each side, so you lose another three feet on each side, six feet on the width of the building that may be put there. What kind of square footage of a building are you gonna get on these small lots of it?
No, but the point is, this lot had a single family dwelling on it. And a single family dwelling on the center of this lot could be twelve or thirteen hundred square feet.
Sorry to interrupt, but so we're gonna make a building that's like six or seven hundred square feet?
Oh, this one's, this one's twenty-four hundred square feet.
I mean, I couldn't, I can't see the number.
And sixty, sixty by forty is what I measured for that, so.
Yeah, so sixty by forty, so. The other thing that you have to worry about with five-yard setbacks. And I'll tell you, it's, it's a major problem, and I remember a major discussion in, in Prescott Council about this issue. With a five-yard setback. And as we've already learned, that five yard is from the foundation of the building to the lot line. If the lea- if the eve is overlapping by eighteen inches. You cannot put a ladder up to the roof. You cannot put a ladder up to the roof without the permission of your neighbor because the bottom of that ladder has to sit in this land.
All you have to do is drive to the suburbs of Toronto, and you see three-story places and they're about six feet apart. You can shake hands out the window if you want. And you cannot get, you cannot do maintenance on that.
No, you can't. So those are the issues. I wanted them brought forward as a tangible, concrete example. It is continuing to happen. I'm gonna move on. Alright, so I'm moving on now then to item number seventeen. Which is the application for a severance at ten thirteen County Road twenty-one, Dobie Farms. There is a briefing note, a very comprehensive and complete briefing note in front of us. And I do see a recommendation, uh, discussion if any. If there is no discussion. And I'm gonna ask one question before we go on. I see Wendy is still with us. Uh, oh, this is Dobie. I don't think this is the one that I have the question about. So if there are no questions, I'm looking for a mover and a seconder to move the recommendation. Okay, I have Counselor Hunter moving and Deputy Mayor Deschamps seconding. Further discussion if any? Hearing none. Those in favor? Motion is carried. Alright, and so that's that one. And fifty, just give me one second please. Fifty-three and fifty-five. And the next one is then an application for a severance at eleven oh-two, County Road twenty-one, Huser. And again, we have a good briefing note. Very comprehensive, very good set of drawings and diagrams. And uh, are there any questions here? I think this is the one where I had the question. No, I missed my opportunity. It was the previous one. No, this is it. On, uh, to Wendy, if, if, through, through the chair, through the C O to Wendy if you would. On page fifty-nine of one thirty-two. On page fifty-nine of one thirty-two, I see County Road twenty-one. And I see the lot that we're talking about marked around in red. But it looks to me like there's already one small severance off that piece. Am I correct in that?
The original fireman's off the property.
That, is that what it is? So that's one severance off, and now this becomes the second severance, does it not?
That severance was taken fifty years ago.
Right. And, and that, and because of that. This, this one that we've got in front of us is still out, is, is still an allowable severance. Is that correct?
I'll have the development coordinator speak to that.
Yes, thank you, C O Grant. Um, through the chair, the, I, the severance that you see there. Happened before December of two thousand and three. Our official plan says you can create two new lots outside of the settlement area by severance. Um, from an original lot of record, and the lot of record is as it was in December of two thousand and three. So this actually wouldn't count. Towards their two lots, and they are only proposing one, so it's, it's allowed.
Okay, so are there any other questions here? Hearing none. I do have a recommendation in front of me that committee recommended council. Recommended favors of severance B twenty-two dash twenty-one. I'm looking for a mover. I'll take Counselor Hunter again, since it's in his area, and I'll use, I'll count, take Counselor Cameron. As the seconder. About to call the question. Those in favor? Motion is carried. Alright, now fifty-six. Bear with me for one second, please. And now I'm on item number seven C. Which is application for site control in Johnstown Mini Storage. Uh, quite a long. One here. And. Are there any questions, discussions with regard to this briefing note? No one? And, and other words, if I don't have any discussion. Then I have. Page sixty-two. Where's my, there's. Here, it is here. A recommendation that committee recommend that council adopt a bylaw to amend by law two thousand and four seventeen. A site plan control agreement for two dash eight. Uh, Queen Street with the updated site plan for Schedule B as attached. So am I correct that all we would be doing is to the site plan or to execute the site plan? Amendment would be replacing uh, the old Schedule B with a new Schedule B, my. Through the C O to the, to Wendy, if I, is that basically what's happening? We just take Schedule B and add this new one?
Yes, through the chair, Mr. Mayor, it's just, um, changing the, or updating the site plan.
Alright, are there any questions here? And if not. If not, I'm looking for a mover and a seconder to action the recommendation. Now Counselor Dillabaw, that's near Baileywick. So I'll take Counselor Dillabaw as the mover and Counselor Cameron as the seconder. About to call the question. Those in favor? Motion is carried. Alright. Just give me another minute, please. This is the last one. Okay, so now I'm going on to item number seven D. Which is the first quarter building report. Which is the next report in front of you, and I'd like to thank uh, the clerk for the larger size. I. I, I, I was driving myself crazy until I went to the end of my package and found the larger version. So thank you very much for the larger version. So the, the uh. Building report is in front of you, or, um, the chair's open for discussion on the building report. Nobody?
Nice to see that we're going in the right direction.
Yes, it certainly is a. Excuse me. So, so what was that again?
They're selling all the houses, they're selling the stuff for the listing for sale, so now it's ready to get the developers are. Ready to start building on these vacant lots, it's there. Get some more taxes coming in.
Considering, considering the, the time that uh, that Mr. Crawford has been spent, spent here. I think it's important to just put some of the uh, some of the facts and figures on the table. Uh, so compared to two year, to the year twenty twenty, over the same time period. So where three building permits were issued last year that created eight residential lots. We're now issuing thirteen building permits to create thirteen single residential dwellings so far. And from a dollar point of view, this represents four million, three hundred and forty-two thousand in new residential construction value. Versus three million and sixteen thousand for the first quarter of twenty twenty. And total per, uh, building permit fees have also risen from twenty-four thousand two hundred to forty-one thousand four hundred, so. It's. Very successful first uh, uh, quarter. And I'd like to thank Mr. Crawford for his report. Now, I'm about to move on if there are noth- if there's nothing else. I don't see a recommendation to receive the report, so as I get through these. Uh, first three or four or five reports, I'll ask for a motion at the end to uh, receive an approval. And so that'll start with seven D. Now I'm moving to seven E, which is the bylaw. Report, first quarter bylaw report. So are there any questions with regard to the first quarter bylaw report?
Is uh, Mr. Mayor, is this current issue on Mary Street included in this, but this report?
Uh, the current issue on Mary Street? No, I don't know the answer to that question. That's a question for Mr. Grant.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I, I do believe it is one of the uh, ones that are in progress on page eighty-five.
On page eighty-five.
Like, do we know what stage is that, et cetera, et cetera?
Must be, well, I don't know which one in eighty-five, we got twenty-three visits. Like, that, that deserves many, anyways. And still not, and, and ten is the other, seventeen is the other one. No, but I mean, when, when's it end? Like twenty-three visits? Let's just clean it off, the township, and the bill.
Well, I think we're coming to that discussion in.
But I mean, we keep saying that.
No, no.
Two years ago. It was right to the last day we were supposed to go in there, and then all of a sudden something happened and we're dead.
In, in any case, that, you answered my question. Thank you.
Okay, so uh, if there, if there are no other questions, I'm about to move on from this report. And just before I move on, I just wanna point out one thing in the um. In the briefing note, that's on page eighty-two. And on page eighty-two, on the first, second, third paragraph down. The bylaw enforcement officer attended to fifty-one queries and calls for service during these three months. The breakdown of service provided is as follows. Clean yards five. Parking thirty-two, animal control six, noise one, garbage one, general inquiry six. So I just wanna highlight that paragraph for later on and, for a discussion later on in the meeting. So I hear no other comments?
Can I ask one question?
Yes, go ahead.
On page eighty-six, when it shows the dashboard, uh, to the mayor, to the C O, or, or maybe to um, to the C, C D O. How do I read, how do I read the, the work order? I mean, it says by top ten. Is that like over the year? Is that? Like, it looks like there's a hundred and eighty clean yard complaints, right?
So through the, through, through the chair, I'll, I'll, I'll allow the clerk to speak with, uh, to that item.
Well, that's what it says, a hundred and eighty.
Yeah, but over what period of time?
Well, it's, it's, well, that's a work order.
So that would be since January first, or, or is it just all open work order? It says that there's only nine open work orders.
Okay, so.
Yes.
C O will get that information.
Just don't understand how, what, like, how to read what I'm reading.
Yes.
Certainly, so, 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 so with, so, so with respect to.
Somebody telling it in the door. Somebody was walking in. Well, somebody's walking out.
As long as somebody can figure out, tell me how to read it. Like, I love the dashboard idea, I just wanna know.
Yeah, I think there's a couple of, there's a couple of parameters with these dashboards that we should clarify or get clarified. Uh, and one of them is the question you raised, uh, but I also like to know, like, is it? Is this a twelve-month rolling average, or is it a twelve-month finite period? You know what I mean? Um, calendar year type of aspect or whatever, so.
So, yeah, so, so, I mean, we did, we just lost the clerk for a minute. She's now back, so I will. I'll, I'll look to defer to the, uh, to, to the clerk to speak to the, uh, to, to the dashboard, uh, work orders.
Sorry, through the chair, um, I'm not sure we'll come into action. I completely dropped. Um, and haven't heard anything after the eighteen Mary Street discussion.
I didn't, I didn't understand what she said.
So, um, uh, through.
But she, she didn't hear anything after the, the Mary Street discussion.
Correct.
Right, okay, so. So that leaves me then, right? So the only, the only question um, uh, through the chair to, to the clerk is. Just trying to understand exactly what the dashboard, what the dashboard is like. It says there's work orders, there's nine open, um, but there's like a hundred and eighty clean yards work orders. Um, you know, is there a, a, an amount of time? Are those like? Those are just work orders that were produced? Is there a date specification for them, or? Or is that the pages before, or?
So through the.
Sorry.
Through the chair, on the dashboard where it states work orders open nine. That refers to the previous page of overall work orders currently in progress.
Only nine.
And, and the one eighty, is that for twelve months, or?
Yeah, what's the time parameter?
But the one eighty on clean yards, uh.
Um, that's just a general one where it does the top ten type, um. The one eighty overall for, since we began working on citywide. I can't unfortunately narrow that down by quarter or by year. So we started inputting data into citywide for bylaw enforcement. Um, mid-January, start of February last year. And I know that bylaw was working on different files before that came into place. So maybe not a hundred percent correct at the hundred and eighty. It's just what citywide has in it right now. Um, if it's not a useful tool, we can remove that portion.
So, so through the chair, back to the clerk, so. So if it's an ongoing thing, four years from now. Like, will, that number will just continue to grow?
Through the chair, that is correct, for that specific board tool.
Well, the, 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 does, does no one realize that that's completely meaningless?
Yeah.
Totally meaningless. Without a timeframe, it's meaningless.
Yeah, that was my point.
Well, yes, Citywide.
Well, so I so so through the through the chair, it it sort of gives you where the certainly where the focus has been over that time period.
Well, no, it doesn't. Because what gives you the the focus of where the effort has been is the paragraph that I read on page eighty-two of one thirty-two. Bylaw officer attended to fifty-one queries and calls for service during these three months. Now I've got a time period. The breakdown of service provided is as follows. Clean yards, five, parking lot thirty, parking thirty-two. There's where the effort has been in that three-month period. This dashboard where I don't have a timeframe doesn't. Well, anyway, I don't think there's much point of of laboring this discussion right now. I think we're going to move on. So I'm moving now then to.
Just just, Mr. Mayor, just before you do, I think the chart has to be has to be useful and understandable, like. I mean, if winter parking, I mean, you can hardly see that there was any any offenses, and we've got like monumental clean yards. Why do I interpret this? Would I say that if the bylaw officer report to to me, I'd say, what are you doing about the clean yards? And I wouldn't be worrying about winter parking, but that may not be the true case in in real life. You know what I'm saying?
I know exactly what you're saying.
So whatever chart gets on this page should be useful.
Yes, that's the point that the deputy mayor was making as well. Okay, so I think what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna call for a motion to to receive and review action items six, seven D and seven E. I'd like to do those first. A mover, please, Mr. Counselor Hunter, seconded by Counselor Cameron. And so that's seven D and seven E, they'll be named in the motion. And those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now that motion is carried. Now I'm moving on to seven F, which is the first quarter treasury and reserve report. And before I start with this reserve report, I'd just like to ask if I could the clerk to provide me with, on page eighty-four, I can hardly read this print size, and I'm wondering if it's possible to get a larger the same the same chart, which is the reserves and reserve funds, but larger print size, if I could get that, please. And just leave it in my mailbox, and we'll try to deal with it the way it is tonight. All right, now, there are five reports here. The first is the financial report as of March the thirty-first. So that's on page ninety, if you'll turn to page ninety. And that gives the comparative numbers for December the thirty-first as we ended twenty twenty, and then the current year as of the end of March, and then last year at the end of March. Now, the numbers, needless to say, look very good. Does anyone have any questions with regard to this report, this financial report? Cash is looking good, taxes receivable is looking good, accounts receivable is looking good. Go ahead, any questions, anybody? So no questions. All right, now I'm moving to the second report on this page, on this on this briefing note, which is the long-term debt schedule as of March the thirty-first on page ninety-one. And the long-term debt schedule again is also looking good. I mean, we're we're in good shape here for as far as debt is concerned. Some long-term debt at four point five nine percent, but some some other debt here, I especially like Scotiabank number five for twenty nineteen GMC Sierra at zero interest rate.
Number three.
Number three, the Comatsu Financial, what is that one? Zero percent as well, ends in March of twenty-two. And any any other observations here? Hearing none. Okay, now, the next report is the year-to-date twenty twenty-one capital status report as of March the thirty-first. And again, as the treasurer points out, we're late approving the budget. So there's not a lot of year-to-date expense showing in the second column from the right, but you can see the breakdown. And I did ask the treasurer, I had a question from a taxpayer today about the Mary Street drain. Is the Mary Street drain shown as Jodstown drainage? Is that the one that I was asking about?
Through through the chair, that is that is correct.
And so that's in the hands of Gere Galloway right now, right?
They 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 will be starting that project shortly, yes.
Okay, now, is that starting the design or starting the construction?
That is starting the design.
Okay, starting the design. And at this point, we have a hundred and twenty-five thousand budgeted, I think, is that correct?
That is correct.
And am I correct? One of the issues that we discussed when we were discussing this capital project was the separation instrument or whatever it's called.
The oil grit separator.
Oil grit separator.
Right.
And and so that's included in this one, is it not?
That that will be part of the design, and that will allow you the ability to do some portions potentially underground.
Okay, that was the point. And at this point, we don't know where the engineers will locate that separator.
No, that design work, that that the design in full scope of 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 work hasn't been hasn't been decided upon as of this moment.
Okay, so that and what was it? What was the the formal name of that separator again? I'm gonna write it down this time because I can't remember.
Well, I I I'm not sure if there's a more technical name, but it's just an oil grit separator.
I believe the consultant had located them and went on his plan at a certain point, but.
Well, it was certainly located at Mary Street and.
Yeah, survival.
Safari, which are which are your two outlets.
Number two.
On the river.
Where whereabouts? Yeah, I, yeah.
And I believe they're around ninety thousand each, were they not?
Yeah.
I believe that's what the the rough cost estimate was.
Okay, and the hundred and twenty-five thousand that we allocated, was that strictly for design?
The 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 hope was for 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 design and potentially depending on approval of the design to potentially get some work done this year.
Design and some construction. Okay, now, are there other questions with regard to this capital project list?
I have one, and that's Suzanne Barney from Prescott. Do we do we know what year was that machine was purchased?
What was the what was the vintage?
Was it one-year-old when we got it?
Uh, no, it's certainly it's certainly more than a year old. I I want to say it's four, four, five at the most, but I I'm not. Unfortunately, I wouldn't want I wouldn't want to guess off the top of my head.
Okay. Okay, so can we get?
Only use one year.
Can we get the vintage of that machine added to our list? Any other questions now? All right, no other questions? All right, now, then the next report is number is report number four, which is the modernization funding. And again, I wanted to thank the treasurer for this report. It really helps me keep on track as to where we are and how we've used our dollars. And I appreciate as well the fact that we provided an interim report to the minister. I haven't heard back that it was received. Now, just asked through the CIO to the clerk. Was there any kind of acknowledgement that that letter had been received?
Through the chair, just the general email correspondence that you would receive at the minister's email saying that this email has been received, nothing formal. And I sent it as well by courier, and I did not receive anything official there either.
Okay, so just the the usual for the usual acknowledgement letter. Okay, thank you very much. I I wanted to know that because I'll be speaking to somebody in the next day or so, and I just want to I want to point out the fact that it would be nice to have a comment. I don't know, are there any questions with the modernization report? All right, hearing none. So the next one, the fifth one, is the pre-audit reserve and reserve fund report as of March the thirty-first. And so this is the way it stands now to the to the treasurer. Have the transfers been made on this report or or not? I can't remember.
Through the chair, no, the the actual fund transfer hasn't been made. Further down in the agenda, there's actually an action item for the water and sewer deficits, surfaces, surpluses and deficits, where I get confirmation from from council. So committee will look at those and then make a recommendation to council for later on this month. But I did want to put the numbers in that are actually in the action item later on so that you can that committee can see the impact to to the reserves in the water and sewer.
Okay, so the water and sewer transfers in have it happened.
Physically, no.
They'll be they'll be effective December the thirty-first, right?
Yes, they're effective that the money actually hasn't transferred from the general funds over to the until the until the consolidated until after council gives authorization for that transfer.
Right, okay, fair enough. All right, so are there any questions with these reserve and reserve fund? Okay, so if there are no questions there, then I'm looking for a motion. Well, actually, I'll wait for it until after the variance, budget variance report. So let's turn our attention now to seven G.
If I if I may, Mr. Chair, just just before you leave, I'm quite sure that the treasurer probably wants to just at least make a comment on 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 page eighty-nine of one thirty-two. Probably that first paragraph.
Eighty-nine of one thirty-two?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So I'll turn that over to the treasurer.
Certainly, so two two parts. It's with respect to the tax receivable balance. I did want to point out some of the successes that finance staff has has been able to do over the last year during a difficult period of time for pandemic. The last year tax receivable was two and a half million. That was somewhat as a result of the deadline being extended to May. But it's still it's still pretty applaudable that we've reduced all those older rears so that we only have a very small amount sitting in in those older older gears. And I did, I neglected to put on the report, but I did go back and looked at twenty nineteen and our receivable balance in at the same time in twenty nineteen was one point six six seven. So we've even bettered ourselves from from twenty nineteen's collection of of the interim tax bill. And I just wanted to make note, staff, like I said, frontline staff has been been very good about it. But a a big applaud to my tax clerk who works diligently, receiving all those monies and dealing with all the inquiries.
Okay, so so just run that by me again now. In taxation year twenty nineteen.
Yep.
Our March thirty-first balance on 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 in twenty twenty was three hundred and sixty thousand, and it's now at seventy thousand. Is that correct? Am I reading that right?
Correct.
Okay, so in other words, the twenty nineteen year has been reduced by almost three hundred thousand.
Correct.
And only seventy thousand left owing from twenty nineteen.
From that year, yes.
Okay, now, there's still eighteen thousand left over uncollected from twenty eighteen. And how many of those properties have gone into registration?
I believe currently we have about three properties that are in in registration. And some of those properties are in payment plans arrangements with with the township.
Okay, so now, does the registration also apply now to the twenty nineteen balance due, the seventy thousand?
Yes, some of those would have been will also be in registration currently, or they might also be in a payment plan arrangement with the township.
Okay, and then turning to twenty twenty, our our balance was two, March the thirty-first was two million, as you say, because the deadline was extended to May.
Correct.
Three hundred and seventeen thousand.
Right.
Okay, all right, nice. I know, you know, I understand that major collection efforts are underway, and it certainly shows in this report, that's for sure. Especially if you compare the bottom, two point five to one point three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hold on, comparison, I think she said it was one point six, so it better than so by three hundred thousand. I'm saying comparative when there wasn't any extension of tax.
Right. Mr. Rutherford.
With actually billing more because we we had more billings in twenty, you know, twenty twenty-one than we did in twenty nineteen because our our overall taxes have increased. What we're billing out is actually more.
Right, exactly.
Okay, so the question I have is related to twenty twenty, which basically, like theoretically, the taxes should all be paid. But outstanding three, three hundred and seventeen thousand. What, based on your previous year's experience and his historical data and so on, what would you expect that number to come down to during the balance of this year?
It I I expect it's going to be similar to our twenty nineteen number where we went from three sixty down to around seventy. So I I I expect we're going to be able to still maintain, you know, good collections on those on those properties. Like I say, a lot of a lot of tax properties that are in arrears, we've managed to set up some payment arrangements with those property owners, and that betters both sides of the equation. So they they get out of debt a little faster and and the money flows to the township more evenly.
So then I went coming back to a conceptual question, if you don't mind. And that is that somewhere when we do our budget, we assume that we're not going to get a certain amount of the tax revenue that during that year.
No, we don't make that assumption.
We don't?
No.
Well.
We we show the entire amount of revenue. It it look it's it lands in a receivable, but we recognize the entire amount of revenue that was actually rated or levied against all properties.
Okay, so we set up a structure of a budget, okay, which has a taxation component, which results in the taxation. We don't get all the revenue that we from taxation as we can see on this chart. So so we we ended up with a little surplus in the budget last year, right?
Yes, that's right.
So this three hundred thousand, when it comes in, what are we going to do with it? Do you understand what I'm getting at?
Yeah, yeah, but it gets set up as a the it those three things get treated separately. And and the and the the taxation amount is treated as complete revenue. And if it's not received, it's treated as a receivable. Then when we actually go to our budget and we underspend by, let's say, a hundred thousand, that's actually treated as cash. And and it's and if the surplus is a hundred thousand, that cash is allocated back to the departments that were short, that were short spent. And and the how do I want to phrase this? The the in the in the interim period of time, we're working on our working capital. We're using our working capital as the cushion.
So we replenish that when we get the.
Well, we keep, well, we 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 maintain that working capital at a constant seven hundred and fifty thousand from year to year to year to year. And and the amount that we're actually drawing out of that working capital fluctuates.
Fluctuating, and so when we get the additional revenue that was a year late, it goes back into that.
Yeah. That that that's the explanation that I use as a to to explain it, Melanie, maybe you've got a more sophisticated explanation.
That's that's probably a simplified for sure. It's not actually considered cash. It's when we talk about accumulated surplus, that's non-cashed value. But it it basically, our accumulated surplus kind of fluctuates up and down depending on how much of the reserve we have, that working funds reserve that we have to use how much of the reserve we have, that working funds reserve that we have to use in order to keep ourselves afloat. We we've never been in that position in the six years that I've been here. And I don't I don't see it being that case. I think we're in financially, we're really good, and that just shows the wealth in the township for sure.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, so now I think what I'm going to do, I'm going to move to the first quarter budget variance report, which is seven G, and that starts on page ninety five. And, you know, obviously, we're only seeing the first quarter. So if briefing note points out, we would normally expend expect that seventy five percent we're twenty five percent in the year, we would expect to have seventy five percent of the monies left over. But the report shows that there is eighty eighty point five percent of the budget remaining in the overall departmental operating expenses, because some expenses are one time that haven't yet taken place. So are there any questions with this variance report?
I I have one.
Yes, go ahead.
To duly chaired to the CEO, the Spencer Arena twenty twenty one.
What's your page?
It'd be page ninety nine of one thirty two. Spencer Arena, Parks and Recreation, operating expenses seventy five thousand three hundred dollars. Can you help me out with that? And when did the rent, I thought that rent closed in December of twenty twenty, if not early twenty, January twenty twenty one.
So so through the chair, I'll 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 have the treasurer speak to that, but yes, you're 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 correct that December twenty sixth, we had the arena closed and I I want to say that sometime in the week of January eleventh, the the decision was made to 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 remove the the ice surfaces. But I'll 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 have the treasurer speak to some of the to to of the expenses that have been occurred so far in in twenty twenty one.
Thank you.
So through the chair, there's there's some standard costs that are going to be incurred at the at the Spencerville Arena, even if it's not open. One would be insurance premium. The other is there is still hydro, we we can't just turn the hydro off, even if you don't use your hydro, there's still hydro likes to still charge you. Sewer charges, so the the system, the marina is connected to the Spencerville Sewer System, so there's a sewer charge there. There was a little bit of propane and some ice ice machine repairs, standard building maintenance and cleaning. And any of our members who were off, any of our recreational members who were off on the subplan, we still were supporting that subplan with forty percent wages. So there are wages and and benefits associated because we maintain the benefits for those for those staff members. So that's where all those costs come up.
That's twenty five thousand dollars a month.
Yep.
Yeah. Well, like I said, insurance is paid up for the entire year.
So the insurance amount.
Drop, it should drop as we go through the year.
Yeah, the insurance amount is for the entire year. It's embedded in that seventy five thousand is the total year's insurance.
I know that. Three months, we never, there's no, no, there's no income.
I know, but it's still cost money.
No, no. Go back, nobody's flushing the toilet.
The hydro charges your money whether you have power, use power or not.
I just find, I don't know, seventy five thousand for three months and we're closed.
But it's still got to be heated in the back, it's still had to be heated through the others.
So to the to the treasurer, is it possible to to get a breakout of how of of what that seventy five thousand would consist of? For Councilor Dilabon?
Certainly, I can provide a detailed report. But I've basically provided you with the information as 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 I've said, like, insurance is a big part part hydro, we still have to pay the hydro. You still have to pay sewer charges, maybe nobody's flushing the toilet. I think that's a bit of an exaggeration in in one sense, that building is still used as like the facility manager has an office in that building, so the lights are on if he's in there, he has to have a place of work. And like I said, all the benefits associated with those members who are on the subplan, we have to pay, we paid all of their benefits, but we also, we have to code it somewhere. So if they were normally in the arena, that particular arena, that's where those costs costs were were coded coded to. There's a little building repairs, so after they closed up and got rid of the ice, they have to do some cleaning and repairs. You got to put money into your building.
I'd like to see the report.
Okay.
See that too.
Okay, so if it would be possible, there are a number of counselors that are asking to just get their head around some of those quantities. All right, are there other questions with the report?
The garbage bag revenues are decreased by twenty, almost twenty six thousand dollars.
Yeah, but I think we had a big bump in sales in December.
I think we did too, because I know we discussed it, we thought maybe it might have been something.
We overran in one month and, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we also, so if you take a look at the punch card sales when people were off and weren't working there, I think there was a lot of people that instead of bagging up a lot of stuff in bags, they put it in the trailers and took it to the
Took it to the dump themselves.
And
Household garbage?
Well.
A lot of people bagged a lot of stuff in a bag that could go go in the trailer, you know.
They got a dumpster.
So yeah, but but household waste is not to go into, is not supposed to go to the landfill, is that is that?
That 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 is correct, Mr. Chair.
There's a lot of stuff that
So I didn't know if you could get in the bag, you can put anything sharp in the bag, you rip a hole in it, you know?
Okay.
Household weight waste, it's not household waste, if you bag clothes and stuff, they bagged up and put them in bags instead of a lot of that went to the other places when they had the time to take it, so.
Are there are there other questions with this report? Okay, so if there are no other questions with this report, I'd like to have a motion that the reports number seven F, they'll be named, and seven G be received and reviewed by the committee. Can I have a mover, please?
Someone.
I have Counselor Cameron moving, and does he have a second or? Mr. Bradley, and about to call a question, those in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Now, did Mr. Robertson leave us?
Says Dave's iPad.
No, he's still there.
Oh, yes, Dave's iPad. Dave, is your Dave, is your is your camera off? I can only see your name. I'm not I'm not neglecting you, I just can't see your face.
You didn't want to figure.
All right, so now I'm moving then to item number seven H, which is the tax rates. And starting on page one oh one of the package. And so the first question I'll ask to the treasurer is that in this third paragraph of the briefing note, it starts, it says, on February the third twenty twenty one, the province enacted Ontario Regulation four hundred dash ninety eight, which resulted in no change to the residential tax rate, but a significant decrease in commercial and industrial property tax classes. I'm assuming that this whole paragraph refers to the education tax rate. Is that correct? I don't want to make false assumptions.
Yes, you are. That is correct, it's for the education portion of the law.
Okay, this is the education portion of the or the education tax rate. Okay, so then, in twenty twenty one, going to the next paragraph, the total resident residential tax rate, now that's for our township, is going to be one point one nine five seven six nine, is that correct?
Yes.
Which is an increase of one point zero five percent over the twenty twenty total tax rate of one point one eight three three one six. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's what it says. Okay, so and then the treasurer gives us a number of examples of what the tax, the new twenty twenty one tax rate will do to various tax bills. Now, are there any questions with this report? Okay, and there's no recommendations, this will just come forward as a bylaw at the council meeting at the end of the month, is that correct?
I just have one.
Called the tax rate bylaw?
Correct.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
And it could be my ignorance, I'm not really sure what this is, but so going down to the the twenty twenty one total commercial industrial tax rate, a thirteen point three nine dec- uh decrease. Can you explain to me exactly how that that happens, Mel?
Um, can I get a little bit more context around that, how it happens? I'm not sure what that what you mean by that.
Page one oh one oh two, right? So we're the twenty twenty annual property tax bill and the twenty twenty one annual property tax bill. You know, a hundred thousand dollar commercial property. When you have twenty six hundred and in twenty twenty one, it's twenty two hundred, so why does the industrial and commercial rate drop drop so much?
So as as the chair had indicated in the paragraph with respect to the province, the province significantly decreased the tax rate in commercial industrials. In in twenty twenty, it was point one two five. And then in twenty twenty one, it's now point zero eight eight, which represents almost a thirty percent decrease in that portion of the levy or the tax rate. The county also decreased. But when you put our levy, our rate increase together with all those three, the the combined decrease is only thirteen point three.
So so the education tax rate had a big a big effect on those industrial and commercials?
In the province lower in the area.
Yes, very much so.
So can I ask one more then? So so Mel, through through the chair, from Mel to the treasurer, that's a considerable amount, I mean, so basically thirteen percent of of the tax that we collect from commercial and industrial, well, this year we'll expect to get thirteen and a half percent less revenue then, correct?
No, 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 we're going to maintain the the additional almost one point nine one percent more than what we had levied against them. The province is going to see thirty percent less.
Okay, okay.
And and the county sees about five percent, that was zero five, I think, or something percent less.
Well, I would like to confirm that we were going to get less.
And and the way the way the province sees it is that we cash flow to the boards of education, not directly to the province, right?
Right, we we cash flow to the four different boards. The what, from what I understand, is the province themselves is going to supplement the school boards with the amount that we don't collect collect on behalf of the school boards. As part of their COVID, I think it's part of their COVID response.
Yeah. Thanks, Mel.
Okay, all right, no further questions on this one. And if there's no further question on this one, then I'm moving to seven I, which is the twenty twenty water and sewer surplus deficit reserve transfers. So again, you have a briefing note there on page one oh three, which shows you what the balance of each of those reserves was at the prior to the year end adjustment, then the reason for the adjustment, the amount of the adjustment, and then the new balance at the end of the year. So are there any questions with this briefing note before I call for a mover and a second to action the recommendation? No questions. Looking for a mover, I have Counselor Hunting Hunter moving. Looking for a second of Counselor Dilabon seconding further discussion, if any. Hearing none, okay, Mr. Bradley.
Sure, I I just want to know briefly, just like for for instance, the industrial park wastewater ha- having a surplus of three thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars.
Oh, now, industrial park wastewater?
Yes.
Okay, run the top one, thirty eight oh three.
Yes.
So go ahead.
Just 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 wanted to remind committee and council that we 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 made some substantial increases to the to 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 the industrial park wastewater rates over the last two to three years. And through through all that that hard work and that effort, that's about the first time since I can recall that we've actually had a surplus and 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 not a substantial deficit. So we just want to recognize the, you know, committee and council's effort and and staff effort in that in that regard, we have a surplus in in all of our in all of our systems, including the current wastewater plant, which was basically eleven dollars off what we anticipated that we required to transfer out of reserves thi- this year, so really a a great a great job by 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 finance and the environmental services in in managing those systems.
Yeah, especially it goes, I think, to the managers that spend the money, spending it judiciously, if I can put it that way. All right, if if there are no other questions or discussion, I'm about to call a question on the recommendation, which has been moved and seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried, Mr. Robertson's still not showing. All right, now, I'm on what is this, seven J? Now, seven J. Electronic participation during COVID. Well, we are in a state now declared a provincial emergency, I think, are we not? So we're we're permitted to hold Zoom meetings, are we not?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, all right, so so was this briefing note prepared? It looks like it was, it said, someplace I read it, an acknowledgement that that we are in a declared state, the third declared state, right, this is now temporarily changed with the province declaring a third emergency effective April the eighth. So anyway, the there's a recommendation here, now this recommendation requires discussion. Chair is open for discussion on this briefing note. The silence is golden.
Just a question then, Mr. Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
The the changes to the procedural bylaw are what is in red and only in red, just wanted that confirmed. To the CEO.
Yeah, I'll I'll allow the clerk to speak to that.
Yes, through the chair, on page one twenty four. You'll note that section one oh seven for electronic participation during declared emergencies. If council agrees to the proposed changes, that would be removed. And in place a new section one oh seven and one oh eight would be added for electronic participations in meetings.
I know, but what what is what is generating this request? I mean, I think that when we discussed this previously, council seemed at that time to be fairly adamant that we prefer to meet in person, as long as the health unit wasn't kicking us out of our council chambers. And I don't think they will, because in some senses, we're exempt from a lot of the requirements. And we have tried to accommodate staff by allowing as much staff as possible to remain to attend by Zoom. So I'm not sure what has motivating this request from I'm not sure what's motivating this request from staff.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, the new one oh seven is just the way I'm reading it is a little more refined. The very first paragraph is, in-person participation shall remain the primary method of particip- participation of members. And we did have a case here a couple of weeks ago, or three or four weeks ago, where we had a member, I think it was at a committee meeting, was remote, but he was, he could not vote.
Could have been heard you.
He could he could voice a comment, but he couldn't could not vote on the matter. And I think the new one oh seven takes care of that quite nicely. I I I tried to the best of my power to compare one oh seven old to one oh seven new, and I think the new one oh seven is is In, in my estimation, a little more, a little more.
Well, the, if I may, uh, one of my clarifications for it, and I, and I spoke certainly against this for the long term. Um, I, I don't think council should be held electronically, um, uh, outside of a pandemic. But, um, you know, having the CDC, having four members of, of the public, while we choose to commit and, and sit at the table. Uh, asking four members of the public to come in and sit in chambers, um, you know, regardless of what health unit guidelines are. Uh, having, you know, uh, committee members' safety at, at heart. Um, I think electronic participation, uh, until at least we're, we're, uh, clear of the pandemic makes, you know, makes a lot of sense. I certainly don't want it, um, uh, full-time like what, um, the bill did, uh, from the province. Uh, but allowing, you know, Dave to, to have his input, um, you know, at, at a meeting outside of the principal, uh, or the provincial. Uh, emergency declaration, uh, being able to contribute that way and feel safe and contribute electronically. Um, allowing our delegations to make presentations electronically and not violating by law, allowing staff to. Uh, contribute electronically and not violate by law, it just makes a lot of sense to do it, uh, until the pandemic's over and. And, and continue that way, I think we're all still gonna show up, but that way we don't put anybody at risk and, and, you know, it just makes, just makes a lot of sense.
Councillor Hunter.
Well, I agree with Deputy Mayor Dishon during the thing, but the way I read this, this is putting it in the place, place that. That you can participate electronically anytime, whether it's, if it's not, electronic participation in a meeting.
Read the recommendation.
Well, it says right here, in-person participation is not safe to possibly attend the meeting. Help for safety and parental leave, travel and official municipal business, medical absence, illness.
Right, but the idea would be if you're, the recommendation itself says for the next six months to get us through the pandemic. It's not a long-term solution, that's why I spoke against it last time, I don't agree with it for those, those long-term reasons. But for short-term reasons, uh, if you have a sniffle at night by, by law, you, you shouldn't be here. So you'd have no ability to contribute to, to the meeting because you have one symptom.
No, that's not true, because we're in a declared state of emergency.
Right, but, but outside of, so the next twenty-eight days, if you have a sniffle, then you still can't come. And that, that's kinda, that's, and especially as, um, you know, members of the public, I just, I think it's not responsible. To put them in that position.
It's just for a six-month trial basis.
Well, sure, until the pandemic's done, I mean, we're not gonna be cleared within six months, so. It allows committee members to, to contribute electronic, electronically, or you as a council member, if you've got a sniffle or a sore throat, to stay at home and still contribute, otherwise you can't come. And if you come with a cough, I'm going home, like.
Better fold your binder on.
Can we live a little longer? So, yeah, if, 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 if I may, Mr. Chair, may, maybe it would be worthwhile to just utilize the example of environmental services. Where we actually had a, 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 a positive case, and this determination was that there were two additional operators that were determined to be high-risk. And required to self-isolate for fourteen days, so within forty-eight hours of a meeting like this, you know. Certainly hope that nothing does happen, but if somebody tests positive and the health unit determines for the next fourteen days, everybody's a high-risk. Then the only way council can participate.
Yeah.
Is electronically, and, and, and I get that right now, there's a declared emergency, but potentially a month from now, there, there's likely not going to be. And, and it provides some of that flexibility and, and some of the comfort level depending on, on, on the individual until we, we're, we're sort of over the hump. You know, where, where, where there are some members that, um, I know, for instance, there, there is one committee member that is not comfortable attending in person.
Yeah, I mean, we.
And, you, you know, I, I, I think that we should provide, um, some, some, some additional flexibility in the, in, in, in the short term. Uh, to- totally read, uh, uh, committee and council with respect to, to, to long-term, that that's, that, that's not an avenue that you wanna pursue. But I think in the short term, that, to have that flexibility with a number of committees and, and, uh, and, and, and otherwise, that it's, um. It, it provides a little bit of balance, that's, that, that, that's all.
Look, on, on CDC, we have a, you know, a volunteer firefighter, a first responder, I mean, you know, should they really be, you know, in here, like? If they don't have to be, like, a simple solution allows them to contribute electronically, should they choose? And that, I mean, all it does is give them the opportunity if they choose.
Yeah, but they can. I guess what bothers me is, is, is moving, is moving to make changes when we're. First of all, we have a declared state of emergency and our procedural bylaw now allows it, now, it's easy to say. That's only for twenty-eight days, it's for twenty-eight days or until it, or until it ends, you know, and it may not end in twenty-eight days.
Not for twenty-eight.
It may not, uh, you know, so.
Yeah, but I can't foresee the future and.
No, that's right.
You know, the C A O has made a, a really good argument with the, uh, you know, what, exactly what happened at, at, at one of our own sites, you know, at, um, at our treatment state. I mean, it only takes one, especially with variants now and.
I think it's well, well-written, not to give the opportunity here, but, uh, I think it needs to be a little bit. There were, were, it's a trial period for a six-month trial. Period, I think, should be, should be.
Six-month period?
Pass it for a three-month period, period, and if we think we need to extend it, the council can automatically extend it for the longer, not just that we go on and out and go six months.
Okay, so. So for a, a three-month, if we said a three-month.
We skip trial?
Yeah, skip trial.
Okay, so put three-month period ending, now let's, now let's think about this for a second, we're not gonna pass this. Until our meeting on April the, what, the twenty?
Six.
Twenty-sixth?
Yeah.
So then it would be May, June, July, so if we said three-month period ending July thirty-first.
Yeah, that's good.
Twenty twenty-one, unless extended by council.
Yeah.
Eh?
Yeah.
Unless extended. By council. Now with that, get. I mean, reluctant as I am, I would go with that on the basis of the, some of the arguments that I've heard here tonight, but.
Yeah, the last council meeting, or the council meeting in July would be the twenty-sixth, so that would get us through the, till August first, which is a holiday.
Yeah.
And then so the, the second would be the CDC.
Well, I would look at it the other way, I, I, I would look at it, that it's gonna end on July the thirty-first.
Yep.
And if we want to extend it, then the time to extend it would be at the June, June meeting. Because we'd have to extend it beyond July thirty-first.
Yeah, but we need.
The July twenty-sixth.
July.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
July twenty-sixth and then continue.
Oh, I see, okay, fair enough, fair enough, yeah.
So do you wanna move it and I'll second it?
I'll move it.
Okay, so, uh, the committee recommends that council adopts a proposed procedural bylaw amendment to permit electronic participation for a three, or for a three-month period.
Ending July thirty-first?
Ending July thirty-first.
Unless extended by council.
Unless extended by council, so you'll move it, I'll second it.
All right. Okay, so, so the new wording, and, uh, I don't know whether the clerk has the new wording, but I do. So I'm gonna call the question, because it's not an amendment, it's not an amendment because the changes were made prior to the motion coming on the floor.
Yep.
So the motion that's coming on the floor is, is the new wording.
Dave gets to vote too, right?
Yeah, where are you, Dave, are you there? You get to vote. He not, he not responding to.
He must, he must be muted.
You got his, you got your, you got your camera turned up.
There he is.
I'm here.
Okay, well, I'm getting a chance to vote here, are you following the question?
Uh, wording, you get Mr. Mayor, please.
Okay, so here's the wording on the rec, on the, on the motion I'm about to call the question on. That committee recommends that council adopts the proposed procedural bylaw amendment. To permit electronic participation for a three-month period, ending July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, unless extended by council. That's the motion on the floor, gonna call the question, those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Need to see the hands up.
Seventeen days.
Yep.
He's, okay, so I'm gonna show it carried. All right.
There it is.
All right. All right, so that takes that one off the table. And now where am I? Greater replacement options. Please, please. Number seven K of the agenda, greater replacement options. And so we have a briefing note in front of us. And everyone's had an opportunity to read the briefing note. And we have some recommendations now. I'm gonna open the floor for discussion before I make my two cents worth, councillor Cameron.
Yes, uh, this greater, um, is this also the greater known as greater one?
Yes, I believe that it is, uh, known as greater one.
Now, is this also, and I think, I, I think greater one was the one, but I just want to be sure. They did not break down on the side of the road here a few months ago? Is this the one? Broke down at the corner of Shanley Road or County Road twenty-two and Chambers Road just south of Chambers?
I, 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 I believe, I, I believe that is the same one, uh, I'm not sure if the Director of Operations can confirm that, but that, uh. There, there, there was one of them, and, and I do believe it was the eighty-nine.
And that was, and that was a hydraulic issue. Now did, and, and my next question was going to be.
Okay, so just stop before you go on, so in answer to the first question, I have the sheet that we were given. The equipment list that we were given some time ago, February the fourth. So the nineteen eighty-nine is called Champion Greater Two. Oh. And I don't know why, because, but that's what I have in front of me, and then the nineteen ninety-seven. Is Champion Greater, doesn't have a one in front of it, it's just called Champion Greater.
Which one are we getting rid of, Dave, the eighty-seven?
No, it's the eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine.
The eighty-nine.
The ninety-seven will keep.
Yes.
Okay, so.
That would be the plan.
Go ahead, Mr. Cam, councillor Cam.
Yes, okay, and well, I get, I still wanna know whether or not this is the same grader that broke down on County Road twenty-two. If I can.
So, so, so through the chair, uh, based on the probabilities, without a one-hundred percent guarantee, I do believe that that is the same grader.
All right, and then I guess my next question is going to be, did that break down? Cause I know it was classified as a hydraulic issue. Did that have anything to do with the condition that the grader is in now that it has to be replaced?
Uh, through, through, through the chair, uh, I, I do not believe that the two are directly related.
I think we had two issues, did one was that hydraulic?
Yes, I, 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 I do believe that that was, uh, the, it was steering-related, that hydraulic item.
Yeah.
I thi- I, I think you're correct.
Yeah. But not, uh, no, the dri- the, the, the drive chain and the locking mechanism is. Two, two separate items.
Yeah. The, the, the reason for my question is that the grader with the hydraulic issues. Was driven from a considerable distance. Pouring, pouring fluid. And then it finally reached the corner of Chambers Road and number twenty-two, twenty-two. And for some reason was parked there overnight. My con- my con- my concern is, was the. Was the fact that it was driven by a considerable distance, it was quite a ways, it was the other side of, uh, Littler. Where the leak started. And you could follow it all the way to where it ended. Just wondering, just curious as to whether or not that had nothing to do with it. That's all, that's all I have.
No, I see what you're saying, you're, you're worried that.
Well, I'm, I'm, yeah, I, I, it, it just seems to me after, after the hydraulic issue that I'm speaking about, all of a sudden now that grader has to be replaced.
But is that still in operation, uh, uh, Mr. C A O?
So, through, 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 through the chair, uh, typ- typically it's, it's, it would be used, uh, during our, uh, uh, maintenance gravel application. We, we, we require two for sure on that part.
But it's, it's still in operation, isn't it, as of today?
Well, right, uh, right now, it's, it, it is not, it, it, it has had its service because, uh, I haven't invested any, any, any money in, 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 in repairing that. Because it's not worth repairing.
But I thought we, I thought we did put six thousand dollars in that.
I, I, I maybe at an earlier date.
Pardon?
At, potentially at an earlier date.
You have a knock to on, a month ago, right, three thousand and three thousand?
I believe, I, I believe that was the nineteen ninety-seven ground.
Oh, that was the nineteen ninety-seven one?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So we've had nothing on this eighty, eighty-nine, except for the incident. I guess.
I, 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 I'm, I'm not aware of that much spent on the, on, on the eighty-nine in, in twenty twenty-one.
So what's it need, eighty-nine, it's not worth fixing, is that what you're saying?
Well, I, 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 I would say through the chair, you're, you're, you're potentially looking, uh, well. Uh, it, 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 it's hard to say once you get into that, to, into that drive chain, uh, is that mechanism of what you'd be looking at for, uh, for, for repair cost. But the, um, I guess looking at it from, from, from the reality standpoint, we, we, we have an eighty-nine and a ninety-seven, and. How much longer do we really wanna start, continue to nurse some, some of the old units, we're, we're gonna have to replace one. Uh, at one point, and to me, it's just not worth the, uh, the, the, the investment to have it continue on a little bit. Oh, you know, potentially a little bit longer in, in, until the next, uh, item goes, and it's far better to, to, to look at. Uh, replacing that in, 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 in keeping that ninety-seven for, uh, you, you know, it, it's probably good for another, uh, uh, five to eight years. And potentially by then, maybe, maybe we can get down to one grader, I don't know. Really depends on, um. Conversion of gravel to, 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 to asphalt and a number of other factors.
Go ahead.
Just, just, just a follow-up question, do we, at this point in time, do we need two graders?
Yeah, through, through the chair, yes we do, we have, we, we have too many gravel roads to expect one grader, especially a ninety-seven grader to. To, to hold up and sustainable.
You've got sixty kilometers of road, is that right?
Approximately, approximately sixty kilometers, I believe is correct, yeah.
And we have what, how much do we have done now this year, like to gravel, like to be ready? To put the new gravel down or whatever that we need to do, the gravel to. What do we need, have we done anything to the gravel roads right now?
Uh, just starting, ju- ju- just starting to, to do the prep from, uh, from, from, from winter in anticipation for the, uh, for, for the maintenance gravel, which will be in, in May.
Okay. Are we, how many kilometers have we got done on there?
Uh, I'm not sure if the Director of Operations knows, knows the exact number of kilometers done, uh, so far or not, I don't. I, I, I don't, I don't have that, uh, available to me at this moment.
Mr. Shaw, can you answer?
Through the chair, um, before the, uh, grader broke down, there was, uh, over thirty kilometers were done. They have done some more road with the existing kilometers, but I'm not sure of the exact number so far.
So we're over half?
Yes, over half, or easily over half, um, the grader was taken out of service. The grader was taken out of service on the eighteenth of March. And there has been several multiple roads done since then with the existing grader.
Well, I'm gonna throw my two cents worth in, I think this is a great opportunity. It's, it's a great opportunity now that we only have one grader operative. It's a great opportunity to experiment with at least a year of contracting to see if we can supplement one owned grader with contract, with con- hire by contract. And I know, we know that there are a number of operators that are in that business. They're looking for work. And I, I, myself, I would prefer to look at that option as a, as an experiment or as a trial, just to see how it works. And save ourselves a couple of hundred, two-hundred and fifty thousand at least. At least some amount of money. And see how it goes, and, and, and I remind members of council that, you know, at one time, I'm going back probably five or six years, the concept was that we would put sufficient effort into redoing our gravel roads. We would put sufficient effort in so that we would not need two graders. Now, obviously, we haven't put that amount of effort in, we've still got sixty kilometers of gravel left. But maybe we can get by sixty kilometers of gravel with one owned and one leased. And at least we can try it. And if we have to replace the eighty-nine, we hear that it's got some life left in it. Excuse me, if we have to replace the nineteen ninety-seven one. Now, that's twenty-four years old as of now, but that's not a lot of age on a grader. Twenty-four years, and we're not, we're only putting three hundred hours or so, or if I read someplace, three hundred hours roughly on these things. So, I, and I don't, you know, we're, we're not presented with a lease op, with a, we're not presented with an option to contract here, but I would prefer to see staff bring us back a report at the next meeting with an option to, with an option to contract on a per-hour basis or per-day basis or per-week basis. That way, we're getting both a machine and an operator. So, there are some, there are some comparisons that can be made there. And if I recall, recollect correctly, we used that second grader very sparingly last year. The, the note that I have in front of me here dated February the fourth, we only spent six, fifty-four dollars on maintenance costs on that nineteen eighty-nine grader in all of twenty-twenty. Now, I take that to be an accurate number. And so that, that tells me that basically we used it very, very sparingly. So the, the ninety-seven did most of the work last year. And as Mr. Shaw has already indicated, we've got over thirty kilometers already done this year. I'd like to see the staff present us with a, with a, a contracting option.
So, through, through the chair, our third paragraph speaks to a contracting option.
Yeah, it's, but it's not as outlined as an option.
It certainly is. Well, it's ba- ba- based on the average of two-hundred and fifty to three-hundred hours of operation, it's gonna cost you about thirty-two to forty-five thousand.
Well, maybe we wouldn't, wouldn't need it for that many hours.
Well. So it, 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 it certainly is an option, it's not an option that, that I'd be recommending.
Well, we know, I guess, in the letter or the briefing note, the two-fifty to three-hundred, is that one machine that's doing it? Or both machines, or is that the total work we do in the township?
That will be, that, that would be basically per grader.
Per grader?
Yes.
So we, we do six hundred hours then, roughly?
Right? Well, if you're, if you're, if you're looking at total hours, yes, probably of, of those two graders, yes.
Well, the reason I ask is that I did a little bit of research with, in the, on this subject with the construction industry in the U.S., checking out several of their websites and different graders, the different manufacturers, Cat and some of the others. The life of a grader is about ten thousand hours. These are studies that have been done in the States throughout several years. So you get about ten thousand hours out of the life of a grader. Scrapers are a lot earlier, they break, need to be replaced quick, you know, frequently. So in the construction industry, they, they're putting a thousand hours on a machine a year in general. And so you get about ten years out of one of those machines. In our case, if we're spending three hundred hours on a machine, the life cycle would be about thirty-three years before we were forced to replace it. So, the age of this machine, which is eighty-nine, is pretty close to the thirty-three-year life cycle. So probably, it's, you know, it's had the biscuit. But so the problem I see before us anyway is, is making a decision on whether we purchase these or we contract out, or whatever, okay, it's we have to look at, analyze clearly and carefully those options before we just run off the end of the dock and spend three hundred thousand dollars on a machine. Which we don't have, because this is a, this is an amendment to the budget. Last month, we had this suggestion for an amendment to the budget, and we blew that out of the water. So why are we having an amendment to the budget this year? It's because, you know, I mean, the predictability of these things has gotta get a lot better, a lot better. And you, you know, I, I've expressed my view a couple of times before, recently, that I'm sick of this crap. Coming at the last minute, the thing has died, and we gotta go and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to go and get ourselves out of an issue. So what? If you go and buy a machine at three hundred thousand, and then you gotta, it's gonna last us for thirty years, and you got an operator in there, so you got the salary and the benefits of an operator. At the end of thirty years, we're gonna have probably a cost of at least five, six hundred thousand dollars. So if you look at that, advertise that out over a reasonable period of time, I don't see that there's a big difference between contracting out at thirty to five or forty thousand dollars a year and that type of expense. You know, six hundred thousand's gonna, you know, give you like thirty thousand dollars a year. Well, the other part of it is that it's not something that needs to be online every single day. I mean, we have certain periods of time where we need it. Three hundred dollars a year, that's like eight weeks. Yeah, and, and the point is that that eight weeks can be scheduled. So it's, it's because it's a scheduled eight-week period, or, or it can be scheduled, it's, it's an attractive option for an equipment operator. And I think the comparative cost is not, is not so much the per-hour cost of the grader against the, against the purchase cost, because the grader includes the operator and the maintenance. Of course. And the fuel. And the fuel, and all of that other good stuff that we don't, you don't have to be bothered with. So to me, you know, I think we need to have another complete detailed analysis before we go and make a decision on it. But my leaning right at this point in time is, is with sixty kilometers, I mean, we could set a budget that says, we're gonna do gravel roads, we're gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars a year, and when we hit the hundred, that's it, no more work that year. You know, we don't have to have a kind of a flexible budget that's, you know, open-ended and so on, so. So my leaning is towards contracting them. Okay, so it's nine-thirty, I've gotta draw this to a close, one way or another. My preference is, Counselor Hunter wants in to hear my question, my preference is to get a, another report, but Counselor?
Well, I hate going around, around the subject, trying, trying, trying to say this in the last minute thing, these graders have been brought up over the last three terms of the council about replacing these graders, and they've been kept being put off, put off, oh, we can't afford it, can't afford it, try to make it do, try to make it do. You gotta have equipment to do the job. And as far as going to have the leasing of grader, you're gonna have a tough time finding a grader to lease, that you can lease when you want it to grade, grade your roads. Strictly, years, all the contractors are, are taking, that have graders that could do this job, are laying asphalt, getting the roads ready for asphalt and anything and other, and you're gonna have a tough time trying to find a grader to lease. They'll lease you one in the off-season, in the fall, when they're pretty near done, you'll get them, you don't need it then. And gravel roads gotta be graded more than once, you may have sixty kilometers of road, but they're gonna be graded, graded once in the spring, they're gonna be graded again just before they put the chloride down on it, and forty percent of them are gonna need grading, grading again in the fall. Where you're gonna have all the people that lives in gravel roads crawling down your back, wanting to know how come I'm bouncing your puddle all over the road. You gotta have a grader available to do that. We just got a bonus given to us here in, in doubling their gas tax that will pay for two-thirds of this grader. You gotta reserve it, you can drop, drop the money out to make up, up the rest of it. That's a bonus given to you, putting it up. Two-thirds of your grader paid for by the government.
What is the gas tax funding top-up? What was that amount?
Yeah, I, I, I believe it'll defer to the, the treasurer, but I believe it was two-hundred and sixteen thousand.
So can treasurer confirm that?
I, I can't confirm the actual amount, but I'm, I'm, I'm gonna side with the C.A.O. that is around that two-fifteen, two-sixteen mark.
And of course, your recommendation is, is that the gas tax money would go into the roads program because it's not eligible for capital purchase, that would go into the roads program, and the money would come out of the roads program and go into the grader?
Correct.
Well, I, I'm gonna leave it to somebody else, I, I'll vote against that, but I'm gonna leave it to somebody else. I'm, I'm not, I'm not prepared to deal with that. So I don't have, I don't have a motion on the floor yet, but I wanna bring this discussion to a close, so somebody needs to put a motion on the floor here pretty quick.
Well, I, 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 Mr. Mayor, I was just, I was just going to say, we for, 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 for many, many years, we've discussed about contracting. We've never done it, we've never tried it, we've got, we've got basic estimates on it. I, I, I would be, I would be right in, right in, that we would try it for a year and see where we go. I mean, as, as, as Mr. Bradley pointed out, all this work can be contracted or scheduled. And we can call somebody who has a, a, a grader and a man and everything else, we can call him ahead of time and say, we need this for this way down the road, this is what we need, and we can get these things cemented, I think. I, I would like to see at, at least a one-year contract, contracted situation, just to see how it goes.
Okay, so I'm just wondering now, the way I'm reading the table, there are, I haven't, I haven't heard from Mr. Robertson yet. There are seven of us here, there are three of us that are interested in looking at a contract option. And if I can get four people that are interested in looking at a contracting option, then I think the way to proceed would be to ask the staff to bring forth, to bring back a, a definitive cost analysis on a contracting option between now and the next month.
I, I'll give you the fourth number, sure.
I, I move that, I would move that, I don't have the word.
I just have one question, Mr. Mayor, the CEO, does, does the, does the operator come with these?
We would ask for an operator.
You'd ask for one.
And they'll give it to us?
Well, sure.
Well, sure, he's gotta, he's gonna have them.
All you do is put out a tender.
What you do is you specify this, okay? You want this work, here's what the specification is.
Mr. CEO, is that? Would we get an operator? That's all I'm concerned about. I can get it, I can get it, I can get a, a grader tomorrow.
Who's gonna drive it? Who driving it now?
Well, usually it's the operator, but usually us. Didn't we rent one from Miller two years ago?
So, yes, we, 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 we did do a, a very short-term rental through, through, through Miller. In, in a number of cases, the, the, the operator does come with the equipment.
Our, our operator there?
No, ti- ti- typically, it would be another operator.
Their operator?
Well, the point is that, I, I, you know, we're looking at contracting out. Contracting out means you go to the marketplace, and you tell the marketplace that you're looking for a grader and operator for this many hours over this period of time. That's what, that, and, and you put the tender out, and, and when the tenders come back, they're, they're tendered that way. Here's the grader, here's the operator, this is the year make model, you can specify that the, you can specify all the specifications you want for the grader, can't be any more than two years old, has to have a good maintenance record. We want, and maybe even we wanna see the maintenance record, and, and we want.
And if it goes down, you gotta replace it and within a certain length of time.
Yeah, all that's, all that's in the specification of the tender. Okay, do I have enough votes here, or do I have enough, uh, members of committee that wanna see a tender put out to, to contract a grader with operator for the balance of twenty-twenty-one?
I would move that.
Okay, so I've got him over.
I'll second.
And I've got a second. Okay, I'm gonna call the question, do you, is, is the clerk there? Ms. Williams, do you have the motion? I haven't got wording here, but are you ready to take wording?
I do, yes.
Okay, I'm gonna give you wording. That the, that the C.A.O. and the Director of Operations be requested to issue a tender for the supply of grader with operator, including maintenance and fuel for a specified number of hours to be used over the remaining months of twenty-twenty-one. And it'll be up to them to indicate the number of hours in their tender. And bring back a report within thirty days. That's the motion on the floor. Okay, go ahead.
Just, to, to the chair, I just wanna know if you wanna put it in the motion, how that's gonna be paid for?
Well, we'll deal with that when we get to it. We, we, let's, because we haven't made a decision yet. We wanna see what our options are, that's what we're looking for at this point. Okay, I'm gonna call the question on the motion, what do I got for support? Those in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Mr. Rob- Mr. Robertson, where are you? Okay, six, and Counsel Hunter, you oppose?
I oppose her.
Okay, so six in favor, one opposed. All right, I'm moving on here. And the next item on the agenda is council inquiries or notices or motion.
I get a seven-point-two here, what's this thing?
What's that?
I had a page marked seven-point-two, what is that? Maybe it's just a, maybe it's just a spurious page.
Yeah, no, that's coming up in my, my mayor's.
Oh, I, I have one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, go ahead.
Through the chair to the CEO, when do we expect our docks to go in? Down the car, no, I've been getting a lot of phone calls.
So, through, through, through the chair, as soon, as soon as they won't be directly on bottom.
I'm sorry?
I said, as soon as they won't be directly on bottom.
Water is too low, even for those float dock?
I, 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 I believe it is, the facilities manager has been, has been monitoring that, and as soon as we can get them in, we'll, we'll get them in.
So the floating docks won't go in, as of now, you're saying, because water is too low?
So uh, through, 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 through the chair, that is, that is my understanding.
Water is up a little bit today, but not very much. Okay, I just wanted to know because efficiencies opens up May first, too.
Well, so to. I'm gonna inter, I'm gonna interject here, these, if we're gonna wait for water levels to come up, we we won't, we won't. If we're gonna wait for water levels to come up noticeably from where they are right now, we will not be putting in docks this year because. My conversation with the Secretary of the Board indicates that they do not expect noticeable increases before. Mid May, late June. So I think that the staff has to find a a way of getting these docks in now. What worries me is the ramp.
The ramp's good, they're using it now.
Are they using it now?
They're using it now.
Well, then, I I don't know what the method is, would be to get the docks in farther offshore.
I don't know.
I don't know, but.
Because they're boat docks, that's what they're made for.
Yes, I know, well, they have to be in, there's enough water to float a dock, and they go far enough from the shore. Well, that's the issue.
That's the issue.
That's where the adoption is gonna have to be made.
Well, if we could look into it, because like I said, I get a lot of people wanting to use it because they're using the dock or the boat ramp now.
Okay, so I think that's an issue.
Opens up May one.
I think that's an issue for staff, let's leave it there for now. Counselor Cameron?
Yes, uh, just a question to the C A O, has there, has there been a date set for the leaf and brush pickup? I understand, I understand that this is early, but it's early. If there's, if there's been any discussion or ideas as to when that leaf and brush pickup will be.
Through the chair, don't, no one hold it to me, but I believe it's the first week of May, I believe it's the second and May fourth. I believe it's Tuesday, Thursday, and then later.
Second to Sunday, so.
So second is a Sunday, so May, May, May fourth and May, May, May sixth then, and then.
Tuesday and Thursday, Cardinal?
Tuesday is normally uh. Cardinal, and then Thursday is the other three sites, so it doesn't align with with garbage collection.
So we get jobs on Thursday?
I believe, I believe John Sam will be May sixth.
Okay, so, so we're gonna get those dates sent to us? Uh, Counselor Cameron, no?
Just one, just one more, and this refers to an email that I received uh from uh regarding nuisance neighbor. Where uh it was. It was reported to me that the O P P paid a visit to a particular home, I'm just curious. Why would the O P P respond to that? And did the township, uh, did our staff uh ask the O P P to? See this situation?
So through, 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 through the chair, I'm not familiar necessarily with that situation off the top of my head.
Okay, and I'm sad, thank you, that that's all I have.
So that's Middle Street, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm moving past council inquiries, notice of motion, the next is the mayor's report, I've just got a brief report. So first of all, with regard to the Saint Lawrence Quarter Economic Development Commission. Uh, you all saw the annual report that was released some weeks ago, there were copies in the boxes. I just want to report that uh we've now, the the board has come to agreement to amend. Our agreement with the other seven municipalities, I've seen one or two of the draft versions. And the significant factor for me is that uh we've all agreed. That six months' notice will get us out of the commission with no liability. So we haven't yet inked and executed that agreement, I'm holding my uh, my, my nose until that can be in place. Uh, and I think that will be in place probably within the next sixty days, but there are a few. Uh, errors to be, you know, typographical errors and that kind of thing to be corrected in the agreement. I just want to report that Elizabeth Town Kitley, the township, has now taken over providing secretarial services to the commission. Uh, now that up and to the right is, is, we we no longer have a relationship with them. And needless to say, the minutes of the meetings are much more. Are are much better level, they're, they're at the same level as the minutes we get from these meetings. They're very well detailed, very well documented, and very well presented. As are our agenda packages now, which are being prepared by Elizabeth Town Kit. The finance report remains in the hand of Ray Morrison. Who although he has resigned as C A O of the Township of Augusta, continues to act in a part time basis as their treasurer. And continues to function as treasurer of the commission. Now, one issue that I want to flag, flag for council is that there is an issue on the financial statements which are bringing up and bringing up. And that is that we have an outstanding H S T receivable or H S T recoverable. Of seventy one thousand dollars uh from H S T that we've remitted back as far as twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty twenty. Now, we are told at our meetings that we've applied to have that H S T recoverable. We've also been told on several meetings that the check is in the mail, but I haven't seen the check yet. And what's bothering me most about it is that the budget. Includes expenditure of that money which we have not yet received. So I'm watching that issue very carefully. The commissioner has been given a new three year contract. Uh, and he has been, he he he's guaranteed a, a base contract, and then there's an at risk portion to. His contract, which he's expected to meet certain metrics. And if he meets those metrics, he'll earn the at risk portion of his contract. One of the things that are in his contract is that he entered into. A joint business arrangements, and this is an example, this one that's marked seven point two in your package. This is an example of a business plan that he has put to place with the Township of Leeds and the Thousand Islands. Now, they're going to be coming to us, looking to enter into a business, a joint business plan with the Township of Edersburg Cardinal. And my word to council is that uh, when I'm approached, I have only one request of the commissioner. And that is, supply me with one, supply our township with one legitimate. Qualified lead in this year. As of this point in time, we have not had a single qualified lead. And what is more worrisome to me, and I've reported it to council, is that one of the leads that we. Introduced to him ended up canceling an agreement in our township and moving to another township. So I have some concerns there.
What is, the commissioner's name is still?
Charlie. And so now I'm moving to the South Grenville Beacon, uh, you all know that the South Grenville Beacon first edition. Was on the streets on April the seventh, I think it was, it's going to be published every two weeks. It's for sale in a lot of places, there's a long list of places that are carrying it on their counters. It's for sale at two dollars an addition, and I've asked uh that the township give consider. Give some consideration to, or I am asking, give some consideration to purchase ad space in that. Uh, in that paper for two reasons, number one, we have an obligation to. To list our meeting schedule, our schedule of meetings. And number two, to support him and his new endeavor to see whether he's gonna be able to survive in the marketplace, so. I'm I'm just hoping that staff will at least provide him with some. Uh, advertising for his next edition, which will come out on April the twenty second. And the deadline for getting material to him is April the fourteenth. And the last thing I want to talk about, and it's becoming a major issue, is this issue of the new police board models. And there was a letter circulated from the Ministry of Solicitor General on March the eighteenth. Inviting us to submit our models for the Grenville Police Board. And what they're suggesting to us is that each detachment will have one board. And it's up to us to to suggest to the Solicitor General how that board will be set up. Now, there were two meetings held in uh Kempville before this whole initiative died. Counselor Cameron had accompanied me to one, and there are two big issues that are happening. Number one, the mayor of North Grenville doesn't agree that there should be only one police board for the Grenville detachment. Which would include Merrickville, North Grenville, Prescott, Augusta, and Edersburg Cardinal. And she doesn't agree with that, she thinks there should be a North Grenville Police Board and a South Grenville Police Board, so that's one issue. Solicitor General appears to have made the decision that there will be one board, you tell me how to do it. The other issue is that Prescott feels that. They should, they kind of agree with the mayor of North Grenville that there should be a South Grenville Police Board of Augusta, South. Edersburg Cardinal and Prescott. Solicitor General wants a minimum of five people on each board, and the Solicitor General is going to be holding a series of information Zoom meetings. Scheduled for April the twentieth. And then the other option is May the fourth to provide us with more information, but she's urging us. To get together and make our submissions to her, so I'm putting that issue on the table.
What's the purpose? What's the purpose of it?
Well, we're, 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 we buy our policing from the Ontario provincial police, but we don't have a police board. Pr, Augusta buys their services from the O P P, but they do have a police board which they have to finance. Prescott buys their services from the O P P, and they also have a police board, which they have to finance. And police boards are, were, up until this new legislation, structured in a certain way, with a certain number of of members. And they have to provide certain. Have to meet a certain number of times per year, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We've never got into that because the cost of operating a police board is, you know.
But that's another level of bureaucracy.
Well, it is, but it gives you direct access to the inspector on four week, four times per year at a meeting. We don't have that access, but we've never had trouble with access. So I don't care one way or the other, it's not a big issue with me, there are other more important things, but council should be at least aware of it. And if one member of council wants to take this on as a project, I think it's a great project, there are several. Counselors in the other jurisdictions which are very active, including the gentleman that was active in Kempville when we attended that one meeting.
Also, also.
And I don't know, Counselor Hunter, did you come to one of those meetings? Yes.
Counselor Dillabod did.
And Counselor Dillabod did, right, just my memory gets weak. Okay, so that's my report, and I'm going to go to the question period. And there are no uh.
No question.
No questions from the public, that's for sure, and no questions that the chair asked to the clerk. Have there been any members of the public that have emailed you questions during the meeting?
Through the chair, no, there has not.
Okay, and.
Before you go, do we, do we do an extension uh now, because you're definitely gonna need one, do you want to do that motion before we close this meeting?
Yeah, I I'd like to have the motion to carry beyond ten o'clock, I was, I, we should do it before we pass this.
So I'll move that now then?
Okay. Okay, to go beyond ten o'clock, those in favor of going beyond ten o'clock, Mister Robertson as well, so declare that motion carried. And then I'm going, I need the motion then to go into the closed session, who has that? Okay, go ahead.
By myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Dishaw, the committee proceeds in closed session, nine fifty three P M. In order to address a matter pertaining to one, section two thirty nine two C, proposed pending acquisition or disposal of land by the municipality or local. Lords of the. Thank subject. Job site challenge and minutes of closed session dated March eighth of twenty twenty one. Number two, section two thirty nine two B, personal matters of identified individuals including the listed. Local board employees, specifically employees of short term. And C A, C A O.
Can you go in favor?
I can.
Okay, the motion is carried, we'll have a ten minute, five minute break.
I got the adjournment, Mister Mayor.
You got what?
I've got the.
The adjournment, who's got the motion to come out of the closed session?
By myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Dishaw, the committee did now adjourn and the open meeting did now resume at eleven oh nine P M.
Thank you, sir.
Those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, so we're in open session, and so I'll report out of the open session. And the first thing is that Counselor Dillabod has a motion to bring forward regarding Counselor Dillabod.
Moved by myself and seconded by Counsel Karen, the committee receives and approves the closed session minutes dated March eighth, twenty twenty one.
So this is to approve the minutes of the closed session, those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Now, reporting further from the open session, council dealt with um. Or or council received a briefing note concerning, a verbal briefing from the mayor concerning the proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land. Specifically, the infrastructure Ontario negotiations. And then under uh section. Under section, where am I here? I can't, I've lost my agenda. Where's my agenda? Under the next section of the agenda, council had a discussion regarding uh specific individuals. And uh, on that note, I'm going to, and took no action. And on that note, I'm gonna call for the uh, the motion to adjourn.
Yes, so thank you, Mister Mayor, it's approved by myself and seconded by Counselor Dillabod, the committee is now adjourned at eleven eleven P M. And I did not make the.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Meeting's adjourned.